I call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and staff your form?
Yes, good morning. Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Kennedy is not present today. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded in closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov, and today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 11th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes, and the remainder of the agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters in the afternoon. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the meeting record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Supervisor Rodriguez, will you please do us the honor of leading us in the pledge this morning?
Yes.
(Inaudible) United States of America, your colors are raised, stands, and regards, indivisibly, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. Again, I want to welcome everyone to today's board proceedings. And just a note for those who may be wondering why I am participating and chairing the board meeting today remotely, it is because I am respecting the fact that we have a couple of our bargaining units that are striking and picketing today. And as a matter of regular practice, during my tenure on the Board, I have made it very clear to all parties that I do not cross picket lines, so I'm attempting to respect that and will continue not to cross any picket lines for their duration. So that is why, while it may be a little more clumsy and awkward than normal, trying to chair a meeting remotely, we are going to attempt to do it that way today. And of course, I think we all are twitching a little bit, harkening back to COVID. That gave us plenty of practice. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach back in my memory to 2020, when I had to do it for half a year. So I'm sure we'll get through it fine with the help of the clerk and others. Madam Clerk, do you have any other announcements before we get started?
I do not.
All right, very good. Then if there's nothing further, let's go to our first item.
Yes, that would be public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda.
And Madam Clerk, because I have a little difficulty seeing folks at the podium at the moment, I'm going to ask you if you can monitor the clock. And again, friendly reminder to everyone, we do have a two-minute limit on speakers at the podium, and that's there to ensure that everyone who wishes to address the Board has that opportunity to do so, especially given a full, very full agenda today. But Madam Clerk, if you could monitor the clock and respectfully prompt speakers when their time has passed, I would greatly appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will do that. So our first speaker is Ryan Harris.
Hey, good morning. It's a nice title for you, David. Looks good on you, sir. I didn't know all these people was gonna be here. I probably would've had something better to say and inform them about, but as long as Ted is still their director, I don't know. Probably can be in here a lot more, you guys. Hard to trust somebody that's not even faithful to their wife yet. Yeah, that's beside the point. Came here to let you guys know that last time during the George Floyd protests, I was protesting and did the, you know, hands up, peacefully protesting, and was still hit by an officer with his little stick, probably because he was shorter than me. He did feel kinda short. But nonetheless, I'm just letting you guys know, we're peacefully protesting. You guys are telling us, encouraging us to peacefully protest, and yet a lot of the peaceful people are being target practice for the police officers. They're not shooting the ones that are going crazy. You guys have seen in the news. They're shooting some of the people that are on the news. So I'm just here to let you guys know that if I get peacefully protested and I get shot while peacefully protesting, I'm going to shoot back, because you guys are encouraging me to do this, which means that it is safe for me to do so. And if you guys are encouraging me to do something, I shouldn't get shot, right? So let's find out. And to the officers that are shooting at random, random people, and officers that are watching them do it, you guys better take better aim. That's about all I got to say, is that if I get shot peacefully protesting, I will shoot back. I'm gonna yield this time. You guys got a lot of people.
Thank you. Ronald Owens.
Good morning. On April 14th, 2022, Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Javi Becerra said this regarding the COVID-19 vaccines. We know these vaccines are killing people of color, blacks, Latinos, indigenous, people at about two times the rate of white Americans. This information has been shared with your colleagues already, Supervisor Rodriguez, and I'm following up by sharing this with you. This is the first time you've heard this. It's the first time that people in this audience have heard this. My former employer, the California Department of Public Health, knew this back in April of 2022. My name is Ronald Owens, Jr. I was a public information officer. Since notifying this Board and the 57 other county boards of supervisors throughout California, I've made 38 in-board appearances. I've traveled throughout California, informing your colleagues throughout the state. I've got 19 more to go. What CDPH should have done in April of 2022. I've also made public comment four times at the California Board of Pharmacy, as well as oral comment before CDC, as well as the FDA. Look, you have a statutory responsibility to direct your health officer to stop promoting, administering, distributing COVID-19 vaccines. At minimum, your residents should have been informed that the COVID-19 vaccines are not safe and effective. I had a conversation with Riverside County Sheriff Chad Bianco a couple weeks ago. He said, since the COVID-19 vaccines, he has deputies in their 20s sustaining strokes and heart attacks. I have not broached this subject and my 38 other board of supervisor appearances, but I wrote a book that came out early 2024 called Muzzled Truth, How the California Department of Public Health Rejects COVID-19 Treatment and Health Risk Warnings. Thank you. And I am going to present a copy of this book to each of you, and I hope you guys will take the time to read it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
So I'll leave it here and give it to you, the clerk of the Board.
Yes, you can just leave it here with me. Ted Samara, Mr. Samara?
UPE signs up!
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name's Ted Samara. As you know, the Executive Director of United Public Employees, and today we are initiating our rights under the law on a one-day strike. This is a position that the Board of Supervisors put us in. The county exec and his negotiation team put us in. You have on the table right now unlivable wage for our members, coupled with, as I've explained to you all before, you want to strip us our ability to negotiate health care and to tell you no, we are not going to allow you to raise our health care. You have other proposals on the table that are going to restrict our rights to strike, to negotiate classification studies prior to going to civil service, to contract out our bargaining union work, and our members are saying enough is enough. You need to do more. You all got yours in 2023, and you know how much you got. And you gave it all to your directors in those work sites, and they got theirs. And they all make over $200,000. And you want to cut and gut our members' health care and offer them 2.8% or 3% raise when some of our folks cannot even afford rent? You just approved a stipend because of these hard-to-fill county exec management jobs and give them what, a $15,000, $20,000, $25,000 stipend to buy a house? Our members can't afford to pay rent!
Right.
They take care of families that are your constituents. They take care of those most in need. And it's not a lot that they're asking from you all to take care of them, provide them a livable wage, hands off our benefits, and do not strip our protected rights we fought for. You want to limit our members' ability to grieve family members we fought hard for during the pandemic to put on grievance leave, oh, because they're just in-laws? Well, you tell that to our spouses. You tell that to our parents! The county should be ashamed of themselves. You want to talk about a family? If this is how you treat your family, oh, it's a sad day. It's a sad day. We're willing to negotiate, but you have to come right. Hands off our rights.
Right.
If you would like to form a line, if you see your name and you want to get in that order, that would be great.
Good morning. That's a tough act to follow. Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of points. After I checked this morning, the national rate of inflation is 3.28%. The county is offering us 2.8%. So by definition, that is not a cost-of-living increase. That is below the cost of inflation. So we still can't afford rent. We still can't afford to buy eggs. Some of us are single parents working multiple jobs. And I was just wondering if the Board would be willing to share what percentage raise they were given?
(Inaudible).
Yeah, please share. Just, just so we can compare. No? Okay. Thank you.
Good morning to you all. My name is Vanessa. I am a mother of two small children. I'm here for the same reason why we're all here, letting our voices be heard, and I just hope that we find favor with all of you to hear us. It's been hard. It's a struggle. I'm here for my kids, to support them. Some of you might have children or not, but it's inflation is high, wages are low, and we're falling farther and further behind. That's it. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning. I want to come to you over here. I want to speak on, first, I'm going to come forth with the Bible emphasis's importance of forgiveness, both from God and towards others. Ephesians 432 encourages to be compassionate, forgiving, tender-hearted, meaning empathetic and compassionate, and forgive freely and readily as God has forgiven you. Now, I'm coming before you because you're hearing the, the lack of income. I've been in the county since 2000, and I have not moved but $7 in 20 years. That's ridiculous. I'm getting ready to retire. I can't even afford to retire, but I'm getting out of the County of Sacramento employment and make more money on the outside. That's sad. And then you want to take away our health care? No! Stop it. Stop it. Think about us. We're the lowest paying, and we put out the hardest work. I worked in the jail through the COVID. I want to talk about correctional pay. Can you take yourself behind the secure door? We have two people in the recreation department on the eighth floor dealing with murderers, rapers, and of the least. My God, with no weapon, with no weapon. And we're asking for a measly 5%. The doctors, the nurses, they get 10, 15 now, okay? But we're not popping a pill and we're not giving a shot, but we're there among them. They could easily snatch us up. Who's gonna come and rescue us? Who's gonna tell our family, "Oh, we're sorry"? Please, I forgive you.
Good morning. My name is Jelinda Broadway, and I work for Behavioral Health Services in the Quality Management Department. So quality management speaks for itself. You have to have quality services. We have clients with mental health issues. They need somebody to talk to. I'm in the admin office, but I still get those phone calls. I need to get them to the correct people. Nobody else will take the time. They've been transferred three, four, five times. I'm there every day. Through COVID, I was there every day as my office was empty. I got the phone calls. I was willing to do that. With that said, I've taken pride in my, in my employment with the county for 19 years. I have worked in the Sheriff's Civil Division during the recession. I had people upset because their paychecks were being taken away. I had to calm them down. I had to fix the problem with their employer who was taking out three, four, five garnishments out of their paycheck. They came home with nothing. The law is they can only have one garnishment at a time. I took the time. I would like for you to take the time to look as, look at me as a person with diabetes. I'm a brittle diabetic, and you're messing with my health care. You're scaring me. You want me to pay more or lose my health care, and I can't afford that. But I can't afford to pay more because I'm not getting a raise. I haven't gotten a substantial raise in 19 years. I need you to hear me, to hear us. We need a livable wage, 5% minimum, and we need our health care. Please do not mess with the health care. Thank you for your time.
Nikki Cooper?
Good morning. Just wanted to speak my, my voice. I'm a nine-year department veteran of DTEC 311. If you don't know, we are 365, 24/7, all holidays. Our demand for us to be there, and, you know, I feel that the amount of work that we do for all county departments, we should be, we should be compensated for that. We're still trying to take care of our families, and we do a lot of work for the county. Thank you.
I'm Russ Olson. I'm a decorated war vet. I could stand here in a room full of soldiers and tell you I'm probably the most. I did 27 months in Iraq. I graduated high school when I was 15 and a half. I have two college degrees, and I decided I wanted to give up all that money and just, you know, do something good for the community. So now I work here for the county. I do like support-level investigative work at the district attorney. So the jail's full of like, I have 8,000 dockets worth of people that I, a lot of time, all it takes is me. That's enough for the lawyer to walk into the court and put one of those guys in there. I don't know. I just, I just want to make enough money to like, not be living with my mom right now. So, you know, that's, that's all I really want.
Good morning. Thomas Delma, also with DTEC 311 for the last 10 years. And within those 10 years, I went from working a three-person bunker in the branch center, which not many of you know existed. And within that bunker was the single-county hardline. So if an emergency, such as an earthquake, mass casualty incident, terrorist threat, we would be the only hardline that would be able to communicate with the county, such as Office of Emergency Services, Environmental Management, other law enforcement agencies, including the Fire Department. 311 has been set as a customer service portal for the county. When I started, we were the comm center. Now we are 311. Nothing has changed, except for the workload that we're getting, and the amount of calls that we're fielding for the county, including emergency, non-emergency services. They're claiming we're not emergency, but every day we field animal control emergencies, we field active Department of Transportation emergencies, and we even field active sewer, water, and drainage emergencies. They may not be emergencies to the Board or to our directors, but they're emergencies to the people that call us. And with that, I think we should be compensated. The last 10 years, I haven't gotten more than a 2% raise. I'm basically making the same amount of money that I made 10 years ago when I committed myself to being in this department than I'm making now, along with everybody else that's sitting here. We're not getting paid enough. Nobody's getting paid enough. It's disrespectful, and the county needs to do better. Thank you.
First things first, I'm the last person that should be standing up here, and I don't want to have to be. But there's a reason I am. It's because a lot of people are afraid to speak out and, and share their piece about what's going on within the county walls, within their own units, within their supervisors, playing games and doing silly stuff. I got people that aren't even in the office 24/7 while their workers are, but they're getting calls about, "Hey, why aren't you in the office? I see you on the camera." "Why are you watching the camera?" We're playing games that don't need to be played with people that don't need the games played on them. What we need to have is a little attention in the finance department. If you've got to cut the middle weight out, do that. My branch alone, I've been in the same department, the same unit for seven years. In that department, my admin branch has bloated three times its size already in just one year. Okay? Look into that and figure out why, because I can tell you right now, the work has not changed. But the people and the faces are all brand-new faces moving up past me as I watch. Let me go. Okay? It's very important that you actually start paying attention to what these people and administrators are doing, because they are doing shit behind your back you are not paying attention to. Find it. It's not that hard. I can do that. I can do the math right now. If you can't afford to give us a percentage range, maybe it's because my admin branch has bloated by $225,000. How about turn down the heat on the admin and give the workers some money? We're gonna get it done. I, I just got down to the airport yesterday having a conversation with one of our negotiators, trying to tell me that the reason why they need more people at the airport is because they got too many people on leave of absence, and we got too many people that aren't showing up to work. That's not the problem. Those people are underpaid for a job that is three jobs. They're not paid for one job. They're paid for three. They need to be working for three. Okay? They got the 911, the 311, and the airport dispatch. Okay? You look at any other county, they're getting paid twice with those people on. Look into this, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Pamela Page. I work for In-Home Support Services. I stand before you today as someone with extensive public service experience and someone who values the work that I do very deeply. I've been on from 911 dispatch. I was actually a sheriff deputy. I worked at the post office. I have experience in public service and what it takes to serve the most vulnerable residents of this county. Every day, I help seniors, people with disabilities, and individuals with complex needs remain safe in their home and be supported in that home care. Because I believe in the community in which I was born and raised, North Highlands all the way, and because I believe in the values that the county says that they stand for, equity, inclusion, accountability, and service. But right now, I don't feel those values being displayed by this Board or anyone in charge. Despite the essential nature of our work, we are not receiving a fair pay. We're not receiving fair benefits. Many of us are, many people I know can't afford to work in the communities in which they serve, which is not right. We are being asked to do more with far less resources, also while falling further behind, like many people have said, from other counties. Other counties are far more ahead of us, but we're larger than them, and it doesn't make sense. When the county asks us to embody compassion and service, we do. When the county asks us to support vulnerable residents, we show up. When we are asked for fair compensation and a livable wage, sustainable benefits, and the ability to provide for our family, we're met with silence and delay and denial. That is not equity. That is not inclusion, and that is not accountability. We are essential. We are committed, and we are asking for you to live up to the values that you claim to stand for. You invest in the people who carry out those values for you every day within the community that you're supposed to serve. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Picard. I did not know I was going to be speaking today, so I'm so nervous. But I work for California Children's Service, DHHS. We service children with special needs. I've been with the county since 2012. If we did not do what we do, then children that have special needs would not get the services that they need. They would not get the durable medical equipment that they need. We are very essential. We have, I want to say about four positions that have been cut. Our caseloads are very heavy. Every year, I think we get like, maybe a 3% or 4% raise. I think 5% is BS. I think we should get more, at least seven, at least 7%. Inflation is high. I cannot afford to carry my children on my medical because it's like 300 or something dollars out of each check, so I can only carry myself. Thank God that their father's able to carry them. But then I don't have enough money to pay my rent. I'm 48 years old, been with the county since 2012. I should not have to work two jobs to make ends meet. When I get, when I get my check, I don't have enough to pay my rent, so I'm trying to scrounge up money to pay my rent. Then I have to pay a late fee, $75 on top of that. And then I have to find, I have to figure out how I'm gonna make it, how I'm gonna feed to find, I have to figure out how I'm gonna make it, how I'm gonna feed my children for the next two weeks, how I'm gonna pay this bill and pay that bill. So it's like, I can't get ahead. I just, I can't get ahead for nothing. We're top-heavy at work. I not only have to deal with not making enough money, but then I have to be worried about being harassed at work, because nothing's being done about management. So I have to deal with that, too. So it's a lot, and it puts stress on us as well. You know, so, we're tired. We're tired. And we know how much the Board of Supervisors got over, 30% raise. Supervisors and managers, I think about a 14% raise. What about us? Don't you guys care about us? Don't you have compassion? Don't, don't you care about us? We, we do a lot. We do a lot. We are, we are the face for the county. And you guys sit up here, you make all this money.
Ms. Cynthia, will you please wrap up your comments?
And I understand it. I respect it. But at least care about your, your workers. Thank you.
Diana?
Good morning. Diana T. Corona. And I work in the Department of Health and Human Services, also for the California Children's Service Program. That's my coworker that just stepped up here today. Health Service Coordinator. I can guarantee that you guys do not even, are not even familiar with that title. Health Service Coordinator is a position that is below the median. It was one of the positions that was presented to the county informed that we are below the median, and we are being denied being at the median. UPE presented the county with about 25 positions that are below the median, and the county came back with five. Five. One of which, Health Service Coordinator, is not one of those five. Just like my fellow member, I've been working for the county for 23 years, and I've gotten under $7 raised in those 23 years. And at this point, I am wondering why I spent time going to school, going to college, getting a degree. I'm 48 years old, and we've got 18-year-olds that are making what I make, fresh out of high school, and they are making what I make. And you guys are trying to take away our health care? When I first started working for the county, I did not even have to pay. Now I'm paying $300 for my health care. When is it going to stop? We are overworked. We are underpaid. In our office, we are discriminated against. We are harassed every day, every single day. And even so, we are there for these fragile children that we serve in our community. During COVID, we were there. We were all there, and we're still here.
Hi, my name's Ashley Keller. I work for the Public Defender's Office. I was not planning to speak today, but I will just, I don't know facts, I don't know numbers, but what I do know is that I can't afford anything anymore. I can't barely afford the gas to get here. I know that I sit here and I look at you guys with your great suits and your Starbucks coffee, and you're sitting here with a water cup. It doesn't matter, right? Like, because I know that you got Starbucks on the way in, and I know that you sat there and came in in your nice cars. Because I watched you this morning to go to your parking. You know what I go, is I can't afford to pay to park here. I can't afford to pay my rent. I can't afford the suit and the, probably the tie that you have on. I know that I'm sitting here, and I'm speaking, I don't have children, I'll be honest with you, but I know that I have coworkers that have children that can't strike today because they can't afford to take it off. And I'm speaking for them. They can't afford to take one day off. $100. Do you know what $100 is to us? A lot of money. A lot. And we're asking you to give us fair wages. We're sitting here looking at Panda Express, who makes $30 an hour. Panda Express, your lunch that you go and have every day, probably go out because you don't bring your lunch, or maybe you're eating healthy. We can't afford to eat healthy, because guess what? The dollar menu is $1.25, and we barely can afford that. We're asking you to think about the people that are beneath you, that are running your papers, and taking your phone calls, and checking your emails and scheduling your stuff. That's us. We are those people. And you sit here and you look at us, and it's probably going in one ear and out the other, because you're looking at budgets. We're not here for budgets. We're here because we are the real people. We're the people that make your job possible. We sit here and we watch everything that you do, and we wish that we can be you, but guess what? We're the ones running your errands. You need to think about these things when you're taking these cuts and going, oh, okay, we'll mess with your benefits. Guess what? All the people that have mental health issues and things like that, where you're messing with those benefits. We need those. Please think about that. When you go, and you go into your meeting, you talk about your budget.
Mr. Chair, that concludes your off agenda comments in that 30-minute window.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So do we have other speakers, though, on off agenda?
We have three.
Okay. We'll go ahead and take those three and then close public comment on off agenda items for the day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Barbara? I'm asking for Barbara. Barbara R., that's all that we have. Okay, let's leave Barbara's name there, and we'll move on to Evan.
First off, I want to thank those who already spoke before me. I was very moved by a lot of your comments. My name is Evan Houston. I've been a civil servant, employed with the County Department of Finance for over nine years, as an office specialist, and promoted to a senior office specialist here with the Department of Finance. As an efficient, diligent, accurate, and dedicated employee in that time, I have taken on ever-increasing demands of work and responsibilities, to the point where I'm often working out of class. I am not alone in this. I have always been very loyal to my responsibilities and supported the county's stated goals of serving the public with honesty and adherence to rules and regulations mandated by the county board and the state. That I am here in person voicing my perspective on behalf of these good people is perhaps a little bit out of character, being that I tend to lead my employees and tell them to get the work done that's expected of them and be on task. To, there's chagrin sometimes when they feel like they're on task all the time, and I see that. However, I have found that the county's unfair tactics of inhibiting the union's rights, stifling voices, and the deceptive, deceptive presentation of the county's proposal is cause to join this strike. I have received flyers and postcards promising increased wages if I canceled my union memberships. I have witnessed how email notifications of the union's goals submitted to myself and employees that work with me have been stripped from those email boxes, mysteriously vanishing. I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but it's a bit obvious that higher-ups of the county are attempting to stifle voices that should be heard. These are not examples of fair practices that the county should uphold to allow their own working community to adequately represent themselves and gain the essential wages in our current climate. Thank you.
Is Barbara in the room? Okay, so let's move on to Keisha.
Okay, so, we're here again. We shouldn't be. I'm not even going to be sweet this time and show you guys any type of mercy, compassion, or even respect, because you don't give it to us. Thank you for all of our family that is here. My family. When I say my family, I ain't just talking about the ones that bore out of me. I ain't talking about my siblings, my mama. I'm talking about every family member here. These are the ones I worship. These are the families you people don't respect, but you want to show compassion to the ones who voted you in your seats. You even got people who have the nerve to take time off, and we don't get it. You deny me choice. You got someone on Zoom, oh, thank you so much. You respect us, right? You don't respect us at all. How many phone calls and applications are y'all doing right now? You got the community waiting on us. We're the front line. We make you look good. We make your managers and supervisors look good. You can't pay us? You want to take our health care? You even want to take our right right now to strike? You want to get rid of our union? Come on. What do you want to give us? Not a damn thing. But you expect us to continue the workload? When's the last time you say homeless is your people? You care for homeless. When was the last time you got there and fed them? When's the last time you go and got some drinks, clothes? We do that daily. My second job, because I gotta have one, I take care of the homeless. What are you guys gonna do for us? We want livable wages. We want our health care. You want to be able to take care of us. You, 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 and the ones who are missing, you decide this. You decide this. Make some right decisions. Because again, you got voted in those seats. Leave your phone to the house now.
Is Barbara in the room?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, does that conclude our off agenda speakers?
I was gonna check for Ms. Barbara one more time. Okay. I, I think that, I think that wraps it up, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good. Then let's go ahead and move to our next item.
Okay. So our next item is item two. This is a service award recognizing John Kozitska for his 35 years of service with Sacramento County.
Actually, actually, Madam Clerk, let's, let's take a, let's take a 10-minute recess so we can let rumors clear and give people time to get prepared for the next item. We're in recess for 10 minutes.
Okay.
Order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Madam Clerk, we please call the roll and reestablish your quorum.
Yes. Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez, Hume, Serna?
Here.
You have a quorum with those members present.
Hey, it's time, please.
Thank you. Item two is a service award recognizing John Kozitska for his 35 years of service with Sacramento County.
Good morning, Board. My name is Siobhan Katari. I'm Deputy County Executive for Social Services, and I'm happy to be with you today to present John Kozitska with his service award for 35 years. John has dedicated more than 35 years of exemplary service to Sacramento County. His journey began in 1988 as an on-call typist clerk with the Public Works Administration. Just a year later, he earned his bachelor's degree of business administration and accounting, marking the start of a career rooted in both purpose and professional growth. John quickly transitioned into a student intern role with accounting and fiscal services for the Public Works Division, where he began building the foundation for a remarkable career in public service. Over the years, John has worn many hats, serving as personnel clerk, real property appraiser, senior administrative analyst, and accounting manager in the county's executive office. His trajectory continued upward when he joined the IHSS Public Authority as the Administrative Services Officer, and in 2018, he was promoted to the Executive Director position for the Public Authority. Most recently, John graduated with his master's degree in business administration from Sac State. However, John's impact, impact extends far beyond the positions he has held with the county. He's known for generously sharing his love of barbecue with his team, creating community through good food and camaraderie. He also serves as a valued instructor for, instructor for the Leadership Development Academy, which he helps cultivate the next generation of county leaders. One of John's professors actually sent a quote in about him, which I just wanted to read, which is, "John is a living example of truly being the change in all he does." As a proud father of three, John exemplifies dedication, hard work, and a deep commitment to service. Today, we honor not only his impressive career, but also the countless lives that he has touched along the way. John, thank, thank you for your unwavering commitment to Sacramento County, and congratulations on this well-deserved service award.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. And for taking the time out, and thank everybody else for coming. I appreciate that. Did not expect this. Let me start with a classic beginning. Once upon a time, there was a young man pursuing his educational dreams. He received his first paycheck from the county, from the county as a temporary typist clerk on call in December 1987 during college winter break. He later lived through four economic downturns, nine county executives, nine different county positions, was almost laid off in 1992 prior to his, the birth of his first child, and later was actually laid off during the Great Recession, returning to the county service two years later, as Siobhan had mentioned, and still stands before you with the tenacity and the drive to do the best possible job, just like on day one. All during, all during these experiences, I still raised a family, had a rich, successful county career, finished my MBA. It was 30 years later, I took a semester sabbatical in 1991, and met a lot of wonderful people along the way, and some not so much. All of these wonderful people actually made this moment possible. It wouldn't, I wouldn't be here without them. As such, this 35-year service award rightfully belongs to them. There are too many wonderful supporters in my life to name. However, a few come to mind. Mr. Pete, my high school chemistry teacher, who filled a void and helped me apply to college, without whom my path would be very different. Gail, we used to call her Mother Gail sometimes. She was always promoting employment with the county and telling me about the job announcements, the job openings, continuously encouraging me to apply. She was a very wise lady for us. And then, years later, came Katie, a major influence in my career. She saw my potential and nurtured it wherever she could, even if I didn't know any better, which sometimes I resisted. She demonstrated the phrase "got your back" when presented with an unsafe work environment incident, putting her full authority behind a resolution, something I will never forget. To this day, I think about what she would do when I have to make an organizational decision. And then, there is Ms. Marjorie Albrecht, who brings such a humanistic approach to decision-making, that individuals who promote out of our office want to return and work for our office once again. Or they stay working for office and sometimes even avoid taking other jobs. Marjorie has been a key element in our office culture change since 2019. Without her selfless support, I can't imagine any of the accomplishments happening with our office, to include our customer service quality. And showing me how all of this knowledge and experience comes together is Dr. Jennifer Norman. I met her when our office began its culture change in 2018, when I needed help the most. Her knowledge, insight, and continuous encouragement to persevere was invaluable in our continuous efforts leading toward the work environment we have today. At this point in my career, I am focused on transitioning operations for the future and looking for opportunities to mentor the next generation. This moment was 35 years and a whole lot of wonderful people in the making. On behalf of everyone who made this moment possible, and that includes you, thank you.
Thank you, John, and... And, uh, I'll certainly, uh, look to my colleagues here in a, in a moment to, give them an opportunity if they'd like to say a few words. But, uh, I've certainly had the good fortune to get to know you over these last 15 years that we've had the opportunity to work together and, um, certainly appreciated your, uh, dedication to, uh, your craft as, uh, um, someone who, I think, exemplifies, uh, public service and, uh, never has taken for granted, uh, any aspect of the charge that you've been given to, to do what you do for, uh, the people of Sacramento County. And, uh, I really do, um, and have come to respect you very, very much. And, uh, 35 years is, uh, a long time to do anything. And so, um, again, it, it's just remarkable that, uh, you're amongst many, um, individuals who have been before this board in, uh, years and decades past that, um, appear so that we can rightfully celebrate their decades of service. But I, again, I think it speaks volumes to the fact that there are, um, these, uh, rare, uh, gems that are out there that, uh, um, uh, materializes as human beings that wish to give of themselves as long as they do and as intensely as they do for the benefit of others. And, uh, in this case, we celebrate that today, uh, for over three decades of, of service to this county. So, uh, thank you and, um, uh, congratulations on the, this, um, notable, um, and remarkable, uh, milestone. So, uh, with that, I would look to, uh, other of my colleagues to see if they have anything they'd like to share.
Mr. Chair, uh, through the chair, thank you. Uh, John, I, I won't repeat everything Supervisor Serna said, but I agree, um, um, 35 years is remarkable. Thank you for your service. One thing Siobhan neglected to mention, which you've heard me comment on, is you have among the top three beards in Sacramento County. So, thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Any, any other, uh, members of the board?
Yeah, I do. Um, John, I just want to say I didn't have the pleasure of working with you, but I do recognize and celebrate your 35 years of service. Oftentimes, when people know that I am a county supervisor, I hear so many positive things, especially those that are on the front line, um, about their work with the county and the, how the county does so many things so well. But 35 years is definitely an impressive career, and I just want to thank you for your time with the county.
I can try for another 35.
Okay.
Something tells me you can do it, John.
With your help.
I just, I just would like to, um, add on to my colleagues and say, what an exemplary career. And I just really appreciate the, um, the humility with which you stand at that podium and you give thanks out to the folks that helped shape you, helped shape your career, and helped do the work that, that set you on this path. And I want to commend you, uh, for going back to school and getting your master so late in your career. It just shows me that you're obviously a man of, uh, deep respect and learning and, and continuous improvement. And so, whatever your next chapter brings, uh, best of luck and Godspeed to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, to my colleagues. Uh, always, um, good words that, great words that come from my, my, uh, my colleagues. And, uh, John, I think you can tell that, uh, um, we all have, uh, great respect for you. And I'm sure, um, uh, if Supervisor Kennedy were here, he would, uh, pile on as well. So, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
Uh, no, sir, not on that item.
Okay, very good. Thank you again, John.
Okay, so moving on to item three. Moving on to item three is the 2025 State Fair presentation.
And before, uh, we hear from, uh, Tom, I just need to note, do I have a goodie bag at the Dais for me?
Yeah.
Or is that worth coming?
I have that for you, Mr. Serna.
Okay. All right, very good.
Good morning. My name is Tom Martinez, and I've had the pleasure of presenting in front of this board for several years. This is my third state fair. Almost three years as CEO, about 10 years at Cal Expo. Chair, um, with your approval, I'm going to give a little bit of a, a background on our relationship and what Cal Expo and the State Fair mean to be here in Sacramento. Because I think I have several,
Please do.
I have several new supervisors that I, I think I would enjoy sharing that with. First of all, Tom Martinez, CEO of Cal Expo and the California State Fair. We're in fair season. We're about three days from the 171st anniversary of the California State Fair. It's the largest event in Northern California. It's been the largest event annually in Northern California. Sorry, I know it's a little loud here, but I'm going to try to just work through this at times. I will, we will hire onboard about 2,000 workers this summer. Not to mention the hundreds of vendors that come here from out of town. They stay in hotels, they eat at restaurants. They stay here for the 17-day duration of the 17 straight day fair. Sorry if you know this already, I just wanted to make sure I, I shared this with you. And this year, we are proud of the fact that we have all 58 counties participating here in Sacramento at the California State Fair. I thought I'd mention a couple of things that people often forget. We're the only fair in state law. The California State Fair is the only fair in the state's constitution. We're required to do one thing annually, put on the annual state fair. The rest of what we do changes with the business model. It has changed over 170 years, the last 57 of which at Cal Expo. That same law requires the state fair to take place in Sacramento. As to when, it's not clear. In other words, we don't have to have the state fair in the summer, in July. And I say that because I get that question quite often. And while the weather might be really nice today, it often changes in the month of July. Last year was the, we had more 100-degree days than any year on record. Yet, we still had a successful state fair, and we did have an increase in attendance. And I mention those things because, over the course of what my, remainder of my remarks, you may have other questions, but I wanted to make sure you were aware that we are required to be in Sacramento at Cal Expo, and that probably I don't see ever changing. However, we probably will change the month or the timeframe of the state fair in the near future. Um, I wanted to just take a moment to recognize David, David Villanueva, your county executive, and, and here's why. Ever since we've had storms prior to his arrival, we've had some fires, we've had flooding, we've had, um, things take place, COVID, for example, and we developed this relationship with the county of Sacramento. I want you guys to know something that often gets lost. When there's a storm on the horizon and they start talking about storm of the decade or, you know, uh, you know, 100-year storm, that kind of stuff, David and I begin talking in advance. And I say this to you because in your darkest days of emergencies, I just want you to know that Cal Expo will be here for you and your employees, for whatever that may be. We, lately, the last five years, it's changed. And the reason I mention all this is the state fair has, has been together for, uh, I mentioned, 171 years. The only times that the state fair has not taken place were pandemic and world war. So, with that as a backdrop, I just wanted you to know, David and I remain in contact and as we get fires, we get floods, and in some, some occasions, when, um, things happen in the parkway, our people need assistance, or a place to be moved to, we come to your assistance and we appreciate that relationship, and it'll be here to stay. And especially under my tenure, I'll make sure it's grown. I'm going to add something here. Since I was here last year, we've increased all the air conditioning in our buildings. In other words, all eight buildings at Expo Center all have two new air conditioning units. All of our biggest buildings all have new chillers, our air conditioning units. The pavilion building where the animals are does not, but, uh, obviously, the cold air would just go right out. The reason I mention that is when there was flooding in the south part of the county, a lot of those, a lot of those families were locked in, and they were removed, and they moved to Cal Expo. But I only had two buildings at the time that had heat. And one of those buildings kind of crashed in the heat, but it has now been reversed, and now we have all our buildings. So, in the future, we're ready for whatever, whatever may come. I just wanted to highlight that and acknowledge David for his help on that. This year, there's two changes to the state fair. Two major changes? Horse racing. 170 years? This is the first year we will not have horse racing. It's not that because we didn't want to have horse racing. There are just no more horses in the north. When Golden Gate Fields closed in Albany, near Oakland there, a lot of the horses had to move. They had to make a decision. Oregon, Washington, Arizona, the majority of them split. Almost all of them have split. So, in doing so, we have a void. Enough about, um, enough about that, but I wanted you to know there's no more horse racing. The second one is, in modernizing the state fair, we recognize that it's hot in July. Yes. So as we look to change the time of year the state fair will take place, we've also changed our hours a bit. We noticed it was hot, and so we are now closed Monday through Thursday, and we open up at 4 o'clock. Instead of opening up at 10, we open up at 4 o'clock. So Monday through Thursday, we'll be open up till 4, and we'll be open a little later. The reason why? We've acknowledged lately, all our research and data have indicated to us that we've become a night fair largely. We now have DJ stages that go on past 11 o'clock into midnight. So we stay open as long as the families want to stay here. While the, while the doors are open, we remain open. We have not increased our cost. We've kept our costs down. So we've had to be, do more with less. Interesting to know, Cal Expo is a state agency, yet we are an unfunded state agency. Just want you to know that. We're keeping our prices where they're at so that families can participate and come to the state fair and celebrate the best of California. And this, the, um, aside from the changes of the, the time, Monday through Thursday, I wanted to go back to something that was important. As, as I stood here in front of this board three years ago, or, yeah, about three years ago, I wanted to invest in three particular areas. I wanted to make sure the fair was safe. I wanted to make sure people felt safe when they came to the fair. Whether it be our clear-bag policy, uh, our, our unaccompanied minor policy, the fair is now set the example for the other fairs in the nation. They now follow our protocols and our policies. And we believe we are one of the, if not the safest fair in the nation. Second one. I wanted to invest in the next generation of fairgoers. Our children. As such, I've tried to provide more programming for children, for families with children, and I've moved this programming indoors, into our newly air-conditioned buildings, so that the moms and families didn't have to be out in the heat when it was hot. So a lot of our programming at the hottest parts of the day would be moved indoors. Something to acknowledge. I think people don't necessarily see that. We've also, believe it or not, we've also, in doing that, have increased our, our children's programming in multiple parts of the state fair. Um, so it's not just the children's carnival area. The, the third part of this three little, three little leg here is we've increased our investment into the big-name entertainment. Most people have caught this. Our state fair concert lineups have not been what they used to be. In fact, I put about over two, two and a quarter million dollars in our big-name concert entertainment on, in the Toyota Concert Series on the Big Sky Casino Stage. If you haven't seen our lineup, it opens up on opening night with Ludacris. I want to share something with you. Shortly, shortly after Ludacris came out, he sold out without one commercial, one, one paid advertisement. Nothing sold out like that. So, if, if that wasn't bananas, I wanted you guys to know we have another huge act on the same night. We have a special ticketed event at our, at Heart Health Park. You might have heard of him. It's featuring Sacramento State's new basketball general manager, Shaquille O'Neal. He will be performing as his DJ persona. DJ Diesel. So the rest of the concert series, the Toyota Concert Series on the Sky River Casino Stage, goes through and ends on the, on the last night with In Vogue. There are so many acts I could go into, most, many of which are already sold out. So whether you're a rock and roll person and you like Tesla, I'm looking at Phil, but he's not looking at me. All right, Phil? Tesla. We also have country artists like the Brothers Osborne for those? No? Okay. And we also have one of my favorites, Cypress Hill. I know, not the normal fair manager, right? Because I'm not necessarily a fair manager. I come from a different place. I come from a different place, and I think, uh, hopefully, when my record's done, people will see that what I've done to the state fair is I've tried to modernize it. The state fair has agricultural roots. Every state's fair has an agricultural roots, and we're the number one agricultural state in the nation. So I pay homage to all of that. The animals will still be there, the wine garden will still be there. The carnival rides will still be there, and there'll be entertainment, and there'll be jugglers, all that. But I've, I've tried to bring into, uh, existence a new model which brings something for everybody. And for a lot of, uh, children of color and people of color, I've tried to bring in entertainment and, uh, children's programming that I feel they will be excited about. We have a new exhibit. It's for Phil Serna. It's called the Calo-For-nya Lowrider Exhibit as well.
I've heard, uh, a little bird told me about this yesterday.
We have, we have Cal, we have lowrider cars from throughout California, from San Diego through Chico. And these California lowrider clubs and have their cars, their prized possessions featured in one of our air-conditioned buildings. And I hope that you have an opportunity to see this. And yes, um, whatever you're into, the California State Fair is the perfect place to find it. From family fun, free exhibits that both educate and entertain, to fair staples like hypnotists, art shows, acrobatics, and animals, all of which are free and included with the paid admission. Right outside of your doors here, there's a special going on. It's for your county employees. If you notice that, if you buy tickets pre-sale, they're $16, which is discounted, but right here, right now, those tickets are $12 for your county employees. So, I encourage. So, as I said, we've tried to keep our prices down for everybody so all the families can come and celebrate with us. So I'm going to leave my comments with you here is, come join us and celebrate the best of California beginning this Friday through the 27th of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
If there are no questions, or?
Let me just, let me just start by saying, uh, I always appreciate, uh, seeing you before the, the board and before you. You always were alongside your predecessor in person to, uh, give us and the public, uh, a pretty detailed, uh, accounting of what's in store for the, uh, for the fair ahead this summer. And, um, uh, I, uh, appreciate the fact you've, um, uh, emphasized some of the changes, uh, that we're going to see. that we're going to see. And I'm glad to know that, like yourself, Mr. Cool, Calm and Collected, that we're going to have some better AC to enjoy in some of the exhibit halls and whatnot. And yeah, I'm really looking forward to the whole experience this year. And the Lowrider Exhibit in particular is something that I think is long overdue. It's a very prominent part of California culture. And it's, it's good to hear that that's finally being acknowledged rightfully in our State Fair, at our State Fair. Hopefully, hopefully it's the first of many years to come where that's the case. So I'll just put my two cents in for that. And as you've mentioned relative to our CEO, I, I think our entire board feels the same way that we've enjoyed a terrific partnership with, with the State Fair over the years. You know, we've, especially during COVID where the State Fair property itself was a fundamentally critical part of our ability to help protect the public's health with drive-through vaccinations and, and checking. So again, just want to perpetually thank you and State Fair leadership for that chapter of our, of our connection. And appreciate everything you've shared with us again here today. So Vice Chair Rodriguez, were you about time?
Yeah, I was, Tom, I just want to say thank you for the work that you do. I, I can tell you that there has been an immediate difference in the State Fair over the last three years. Or there were concerns prior to that about safety. But I have been to the State Fair the past three years and I have enjoyed it, walked around. I love the exhibits. I'm really glad to see that you are investing in the next generation of goers because it is fun, it is fun and there's so many things to do for different people. And I did notice a difference even in the concerts that have been presented at the State Fair. I'm also a big Cypress Hill fan, so you know, I look forward to enjoying that. And also seeing that you're bringing culture to the State Fair with the lowriders. Because you know, I, I grew up in a, in a big city that lowriders were a big part of the culture and people are so proud of the investments they make into their vehicles. And so it'll be really neat to see that. So anyways, thank you for all that you do and you are appreciated.
Thank you.
Any others on the board?
Yeah, we're, we're all queued in here. Chair, I'll, I'll go ahead and go next. Tom, first of all, thank you for being here. Thank you for your presentation. I, I really appreciate you acknowledging the agricultural roots of the State Fair because actually all of the county fairs technically are the agricultural districts of the state of California. And then that culminates in presenting their, you know, prize results at the State Fair. So I do support the date change, but I recognize that you have a juggling act of making sure that the State Fair comes after all of the agricultural districts have their individual county fairs. And that it can be just as hot in September as it is in July. So I mean, you gotta.
Flip a coin, right?
That's it, you gotta hurt, yeah. An unwinnable task when it comes to that unless you choose to hold it in December. But I do appreciate your offer of utilizing that public asset for emergency situations. Whether that's, you know, as was mentioned, the, the pandemic or, or you know, when the flood happened. And I know people were bringing their animals and themselves to that huge expanse of space in order to take advantage of that. So I'm glad that you are accounting for the elements with the cooling and the heating. And, and then with respect to the horse racing, I, I think horse racing in general is probably falling out of favor, except for the very large, very popular ones, back east particularly. But maybe there's a way to repurpose that asset with respect to motocross or midget car racing or something that takes advantage of that dirt car track for, for people's entertainment. But then the last thing I would like to say is I just want to acknowledge that since last State Fair and this State Fair, you lost a champion, a board member, an tireless advocate in Dr. Sonny Chong. And I thank you for making available one of the exposition buildings to hold his memorial services. He was a diehard State Fair fanatic and, and thank you for honoring him in the way that you did.
Miss him every day. Chairman, I, I just wanted you guys to know that per your advice, the cannabis exhibit has been, remains open and enlarged. We're moving it to the water park, so it's in its own gated community and expanded. And it does have the smoking lounge that Mr. Desmond requested, so I want to make sure.
Did you just, did you just say that in a public meeting, Tom? Wait a second.
On that note.
Mr. Through the chair, I was queued up here. Don't go anywhere, Tom. I was actually just gonna, just compliment you on your great work, but now I'm not so sure.
It is the, it is the largest agricultural cash crop in California. Who would have guessed but the people?
No, and actually I do think.
The people voted and.
I have not partaken of products, but it is a great, it is, it is a great. All right, the floor is mine, Tom. Okay, let me say a few words here. I just want to thank you Supervisor for mentioning Sonny Chong. That was very, very classy and everything you've done to recognize him. But I just want to pile on here, you know, you have done tremendous work. I've been going to the State Fair since my entire life. And you have done some wonderful things over the past few years. And you're, you're all around great guy too. I mean, your passion, your enthusiasm for the State Fair is really infectious. And your partnership with the county has been invaluable to us. I plan to be there multiple days this year and, and very, very exciting to see what the future holds in store for that grandstand area where we previously have had horse racing for many, many decades. I think it's a very underutilized space and we can do some really, really great things there on the edge of my unincorporated Sacramento County District, of course.
Stay tuned.
Thank you.
Stay tuned on that one.
Yes, my, thank you for, for mentioning the grandstand area Supervisor Desmond. That's where I saw my first concert in 1982. It was Carlos Santana opening up for the Police.
Oh, wow.
I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful we can have some kind of reconstituted purpose for that, that area. It's kind of a very unique opportunity. So I think, you know, people much smarter than myself will figure that out.
And one more thing, Mr. Chair, one more thing I want to say. If you want to see Supervisor Hume at the fair, go on the night that Air Supply is playing.
Oh, there you go.
Chairman, Supervisors, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Okay, now we're on to your consent matters, items four through 45. I do have a couple of notes. For item eight, this is to adopt the First Plan Amendment to Retiree Health Savings Plan. We're requesting to hold that over until 2:00 PM. That will go after the Youth Commission presentation that starts right at two. And then for item 38, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 16.20 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code to Housing. You are waiving full reading and continuing to July 22nd for adoption. And that concludes my notes and I do believe the county executive will have some comments after.
After the vote.
Yeah.
Yes, very good, thank you. And I would also note that we do have forfeits requirements on items four, seven and 10. So.
Madam Clerk.
Hold on, Madam Clerk, I failed to ask you whether or not we had any public speakers on the last presentation.
We did not.
Okay, all right, very good. With that, I will look to my colleagues as any member of the board wish to pull an item for separate vote or consideration or to simply ask a question or offer a comment. I'll start with Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Yeah, I would like to pull item number five.
Okay.
I'll read that into the record. This is the authorization to appoint Florence Evans as County Clerk Recorder of the Sacramento County Clerk Recorder Department.
Let, let me ask before you start, are you pulling it or is this for comment only?
Pulling it for comment.
Okay, that's, it's, all right, that's different. So what?
Okay.
Comment, very good.
Do you want me to wait? I can wait.
No, 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 but I just making the distinction when someone says pull it typically means pull it for a separate vote.
Oh, sorry.
You'll want to comment on it.
I want to pull for comment.
Okay, I think the county executive is going to do that as well.
Okay, you know what, I will wait.
Okay.
I'll wait.
All right, any, any other members of the board wish to isolate an item from consent? Hearing none, all right.
Hold, hold on here, Chair, sorry, I didn't have my microphone on.
No, I was just going to make a comment on item five. I'm still debating whether I'm or not, I'm a hard no on that one, but that was it.
Okay, very, very good. I, I do have an item that I'd just like to make a comment on, please, item 17.
Yes, I'll read that into the record. Item 17, approve the improvement implementation agreement between Taylor Morrison of California and the County of Sacramento for Florin Vineyards one and two.
Great, thank you. I, I don't have concern with this item necessarily, except to say that the vineyard community for a long time has been slow to develop. And a lot of the infrastructure that was coming and should have been in place is trailing development. And I think that the community is really feeling that pinch, particularly with respect to the school district and the delivery of the, the elementary school that has long been promised and for which that they are paying Mela Russe taxes on their homes. And so, you know, roadway and drainage were, I think, some of the hurdles that had to be factored in order to, to make that community develop in the first place. And so again, I don't oppose this, but I just would like to, for us to be mindful that we are watching that and being sure that these people are given the amenities that, that they bought into. Thank you. And with that, if there's no other comments, Chair, I would remove, I would move for the consent calendar holding over item eight until the afternoon.
Okay, very good. And then I will note that we're all going to have comments on five and then we'll, I'll go in the order that I heard for that item. So Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wish to speak on any consent matter?
No, we do not at this time.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you can see it, but there, folks are clearing the room. They want to wait a few seconds here.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Desmond for letting me know. Madam Clerk, you let me know when the chambers are.
I sure, I sure will. We're just about there, just a few more seconds. Okay, Mr. Chair. We're cleared out.
Very good. So we have no members of the public sign to speak on consent. We have, did we get a motion and a second on, on that?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. And then we are going to hear from the CEO on item five. And we'll have comments as well from my colleagues, myself on that item. Please vote.
I will go ahead and call a roll call vote Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Aye.
Supervisor Hume.
Aye.
Supervisor Serna.
Aye.
And that is a unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, very good. Mr. CEO Flo George.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. I want to thank all of you in item number five that you've guys have pointed out quite clearly in that we've made a recommendation or I've made a recommendation to make an appointment. And I appreciate your confirmation on that. So that item number five is to appoint our own Flo Evans or Florence Evans to be our County Clerk Recorder. As you may know, Flo has had a 22-year career with the county. And for the past nine years, she has served as your clerk of the board. Her leadership has been instrumental in being, in bringing about improvements and innovation to the office and the processes around the board's operations. She's inserted a streamlined meeting process from agenda creation, real-time access to documents and audio recordings that have gave the public improved access and access for opportunities to view that material. We are fortunate to have the opportunity to appoint Flo in this new position as County Clerk Recorder. And I have no doubt that her enthusiasm, her education and her experience will serve the public well in her new role. In addition to the congratulations to Flo and the gorgeous flowers that are coming out, I'd also like to thank Donna Alred. Donna Alred is your current County Clerk Recorder and she's been with the county now for 35, 34 years. I think she's been trying or at least threatening to retire for at least the last two and we've been able to keep her around for at least that long. Donna's commitment to excellence and her tireless effort to make a lasting impact on the organization and the community has been fantastic. Her leadership and positive influence has all made us better and that organization better for that. So I hope Donna's retirement brings some relaxation, some joy and, and new adventures in her new life. And I want to just say thank you to Donna for her commitment to Sacramento County. And with that, I'd like to congratulate Flo. She's made her way to the podium here. And Supervisor Serna, if you would allow maybe Flo a couple of words. I understand she has some things to share with the board. So thank you all for your commitment. I know that was a tough decision to give up your clerk, but I have to say I think this will be a great opportunity for Flo and a great opportunity for Sacramento County. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villanueva. I cannot see very well what's going on. So I don't know if the flowers are in your possession. I think they are.
Yes, they are.
They are.
Okay, very good. I want to make certain that you understand Flo, that is from the entire board. And it is to certainly help you celebrate this, this occasion of your advancement to a very important position in Sacramento County. I'll have a few more comments later, but the floor is yours. And then once you're concluded with your, your words, then we're going to hear from Vice Chair Rodriguez.
I wasn't prepared for the flowers and I just need to get myself together. First of all, good morning, board members. County Executive David Villanueva, Deputy County Executive Sylvester Fadell, Siobhan Katari and Eric Jones. And all of you who are here, my colleagues, my friends, my team. I want to start by expressing my heartfelt gratitude for this incredible opportunity to serve as your next County Clerk Recorder. It's truly an honor to carry out Donna's legacy. She was the first person to be my mentor when I was appointed as clerk and she holds a very dear place in my heart. I am humbled and I'm excited to step into this new role. Serving as the clerk of the board has been a meaningful chapter in my career and a rewarding experience. I had the privilege of working alongside dedicated colleagues, county leadership and a talented team who deeply care about good governance, transparency and public service. The experiences have prepared me well for this next step and I take those values with me into this new chapter. As County Clerk Recorder, I'm committed to building on the department's strong foundation that Donna has set forth. Expanding access to services and strengthening community trust and finding innovative ways to improve how we serve the public. The office plays a vital role in people's lives and I take, I take that responsibility seriously. I'm excited for the clerk of the board and the team's future and I'm confident that they will continue to serve you, Board of Supervisors, county leadership, departments and community members with kindness, compassion and excellence. I'm honored and grateful to step into this new role and I thank you for the trust and confidence you've placed in me. I'm ready to get to work and I look forward to working with an amazing new team and all that we will accomplish together. And I want to say thank you to my mom and my dad and my family. And I would just be remiss, the most important thing in my life is my Savior, Jesus Christ. remiss, the most important thing in my life is my Savior, Jesus Christ, and I would like to thank Him publicly and honor Him. I will sit down now.
Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Flo, it has been a tremendous pleasure to have been working with you so closely these past six months, and even when you were away, it's amazing the team that you have built that was able to step into this role and carry it on. And it says a lot about leadership when people can do that. But I just want to thank you for your years with the clerk's office and all that you have done. I have a chief of staff that has said you have been his favorite person to work with, which means everybody else is not, and that says a lot. But I, you know, I just want to thank you for all that you have done, and I'm excited for your new role. It's really neat when the county is able to place such high-performing individuals into positions that have the ability to continue to share your leadership now with the new department. And so, I wish you all the best, God bless you in your new role, and I'm sure we will still see each other. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm not sure who's next in the queue. I'm gonna go to Supervisor Desmond.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Flo, you started crying before you even got to the podium, and so several others were crying as well. You know, I haven't been on this board nearly as long as our chair, so I haven't gotten to know you as well as him, but I tell you, you have just been such a wonderful friend and guide to me and support network for me. You have taken such good care of the board members, and, you know, we love you because of that, because we know you love us, and I don't know what we're gonna do without that. Those are very big shoes to fill. But ironically, I think I will get to see you even more now, because you'll be off American River Drive out there. So, I've already told my staff that I plan to do a lot more office hours out in the district, so you need to find some space for me, so I'll have a chance to keep in touch with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all you've done for the county and will continue to do, and certainly for the board, in supporting us and looking after us, and really managing meetings with such an amazing level of professionalism and deftness through some difficult times. And also, Donna, thank you to your service as well. Congratulations to you on your retirement. Thank you, Flo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. It's been alluded to, you know, kind of in a joking way, but these are bittersweet moments, when selfishly, we want to hold someone back, but professionally, we know that they have outgrown the current position, and an opportunity is available that, you know, unfortunately, we can't be everywhere and everything to everyone. So, thank you for making a difficult decision that I know you had to make. Thank you for all of your dedication in supporting this board and each of us individually, and just, I really appreciate the sincerity and compassion that you show in your job and the respect that you have for the position, and I'm sure you will carry that forward into your new role. And so, congratulations to you. I hate to see you go, but I really wish you the best in your new position.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Donna, and enjoy retirement.
Great, thank you Supervisor, and thanks to all my colleagues for your great words. So, as was alluded to, I have had the chance to work alongside you, Flo, for several years, and following Cindy's retirement, you were very quick to do what you always do, which is be very deliberate and thoughtful about what that opportunity might mean, not to just your sense of career advancement, but what it means in terms of the responsibility that comes with the post of being clerk of the Board of Supervisors for a large county, that one that has a tremendous amount of not just the business before us on any given Tuesday, but day in and day out, which is what the public doesn't really have a chance to understand and appreciate, and you've certainly taken that to the next level by doing things like wanting to include in the services that the clerk of the board's office provides the public, passport services, right? Now, I know that's been kind of a project that you've been very close to, and that should have been one of our many clues that I kind of figured that you might want to progress at some point to a different post that is immersed in detailed provision of service to the public, and I think clerk recorder's office is the appropriate rightful place for you to continue your wonderful public service. And you have, you have been such a consummate professional, I would say to a fault, and as you know, our running joke is you absolutely refused to call me by my first name for years, and you continued to do so, and despite my lobbying to that effect, you, you know, really maintain this even keel and this presence that is soothing at times, calming when necessary. You are a problem solver extraordinaire, and it's a very, very, I think, very difficult job being clerk of the board in terms of all the places you get pulled and pushed to, and to do that, and usually in a compressed schedule. So, for those that are out there that are watching, who aspire ever to be a clerk of the Board of Supervisors for any county, large or small, please take note Flo Evans is your textbook example, in my humble opinion, of how to do it and how to do it right. So, while we will certainly miss you and, you know, your service alongside us in your current capacity, we really, really do want to celebrate with you and look forward to all the great things you're gonna do in your next chapter here. And like my colleagues, I also want to extend my congratulations to Donna for job well done, very well done, and your retirement is well, well-deserved, and we wish you the best as that approaches. So, again, the flowers are only a very, very small token of our appreciation, all five of us, for what you do, and also all of our staffs, the staffs that you work with, quite frankly, probably even more closely than you ever have with us, and all of our staffs, our chiefs, join us in congratulating you. So, thanks again, Flo, for a job well done.
Thank you very much. I'm very humbled by the flowers and everyone's kind words, and I'm just so happy I don't have to clerk like another 250 board meetings, so I think that's just about what I did. And I'm just ready to turn that baton over. You have, you know, an excellent pool of leadership, and I have to thank our county executive and his leadership team, and I'm just, I'm just so excited. I know that coming behind Donna is a very big shoes, very big shoes to fill, and it's daunting, but I have a lot of enthusiasm, I'm excited, and I just feel so grateful and blessed that David and Sylvester saw worthy, you know, in me, and they're putting their confidence in me and that you guys are gonna vote yes and put me in, and so, thank you. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, for the time being, do we have anyone signed up to address this matter?
No, we don't.
All right, very good. Next item then, please.
All right. Okay, our first 10 o'clock timed item, let me just get to that real quick. This is the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Hearing for Approval of Tax Exempt Bonds and Approval of Issuance of Series 2025 Airport System Revenue Bonds in One or More Series in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $800 Million, and Authorize the Refunding of a Certain Outstanding Airport System Revenue Bonds Through a Tender Offer for the Purchase and/or Exchange of Such Bonds, and Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of Related Bond and Tender Documents, and Authorizing Certain Other Actions in Connection Therewith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good day, Chair Serna and Supervisors. My name is Colin Bettis, and I'm the County Debt Officer. The item before you now is the recommendation, recommended issuance of the next bonds to fund additional SMF-forward projects. The primary purpose of these bonds will be to issue nearly $412 million for the projects for, in new money bonds, for constructing additional gates at Concourse B, improving baggage handling systems, and adding apron space, as well as improvements to the baggage handling system at Terminal A. The requested authorization amount significantly exceeds $412 million for the projects listed above. This is due to the opportunity to achieve savings from tendering outstanding bonds with a call date within the next few years. Through a tender offer, the county will invite current investors to tender their current holdings for a price. If the investors choose to take this option, then the county will achieve savings through what is essentially refunding of those bonds. Additionally, we will retain the ability to issue regular refunding bonds for any non-tendered bonds in the following year or two. The requested authorization takes into consideration the anticipated solicitation of target bonds and their tender candidates. The size considerations include costs of issuance, reserve fund deposits, and capitalized interest, with some cushion for market fluctuations. The tender offer approach to refunding is consistent with the County of Sacramento's debt policy, which permits refundings if there is a net economic benefit, or to achieve other significant objectives. In general, refunding should produce a net economic benefit of net present value of 3%, but we are targeting bonds that should achieve around 5% or above by series, and approximately 6.2% in the aggregate. The financing plan for the projects includes these bonds, passenger facility charges, and grant funds. As of July 1, the Department of Airports has decided not to seek another TFI loan for the current projects. Consequently, the amount previously tied to the TFI loan has been incorporated into the Series 2025 bonds. The Department of Airports has determined that the benefits of the TFI program for these projects are not as beneficial as they were for the pedestrian walkway project, primarily because this project would not qualify for the rural program of TFI and would have to pay the full treasury rate rather than half of the treasury rate, minimizing potential savings from the program. As mentioned in the board letter, PFM has prepared a revised good faith estimate. I hope I have that here. The revised estimate includes a par amount of $500.5 million with a project deposit of $331.2 million. The estimated all-in true interest cost is 4.98%, 4.908%. The final maturity will be July 1 of 2025, and the bonds will be issued as fixed-rate bonds and will not be a liability of the general fund. Today, we have Cindy Nickel, Director of Airports, Brian Galucci of PFM, the county's municipal advisor, and Jenna McGann of OREC, the county's bond counsel. This concludes my presentation. At this time, I request that you open the public hearing, hear any public comments, close the public hearing, and consider staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Colin. Okay, any questions of Colin before I open the public hearing?
I'm not hearing any. So, with that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak on this matter?
We do not have any public speakers for item 46.
Very good, thank you. I will therefore close the public hearing. That's the sound of my knuckles on my desk, by the way. So, bring it back to the board. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and move the recommended action.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Chair Rodriguez. Is there a second? Someone seconded, I think, without a microphone on.
Which was Desmond.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez?
Aye.
Hume?
Aye.
Serna?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good. Next item, please.
Item 47, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. This is the public hearing to proceed with projects and levy assessments in Zone 13 of the Sacramento County Water Agency for fiscal year 2526.
Good morning, Supervisors and Chair. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Mike Grenstead with the Department of Water Resources, and I am here today to introduce the Zone 13 assessment. In 1987, the board approved the formation of Zone 13. The assessment methodology and cost allocation have been the same since 1995. If approved, the 2526 assessment will generate approximately $2.3 million for the zone. The zone currently funds programs listed in the engineer's report, which is attached to the board letter. This morning, I asked that your board take the following actions. Open the public hearing regarding the projects proposed for Zone 13 and the levy of assessments in the zone. Consider public testimony. Close the public hearing. Adopt the resolution instituting projects and levying assessments in Zone 13 for fiscal year 2526. Thank you so much, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? Hearing none? Okay, we will open the public hearing.
We do not have any public speakers for item 47. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, can you hang on just one second? We're having a little bit of technical difficulty on our end. Just one second. There we go. Okay, Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt you. We're fixed now on our end.
Okay, close the public hearing. Would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll go ahead and move the recommended action.
Second. Hume.
Moved and seconded. Please, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Yes, Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez?
Aye.
Hume?
Aye.
Serna?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Next item, please.
Yes, moving on to item 48. You're acting as the Board of Supervisors, County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone Number 3, Public Hearing on the Written Report of Service Charges for Fiscal Year 2526. Confirm report and fix the charges.
Good morning, members of the board. Joe Grassick with County Engineering, and we also have staff from DOT in the audience to help with any questions that may come up. So, CSA 10 was formed in 2003 to provide trip reduction services for new growth areas of the county. Currently, Zone 3 is the only active zone and includes North Vineyard Station, Florin Vineyard, and the Wildhawk North development areas. In May, the board received a written report of operating requirements and service charges and set this public hearing, and the written report summarizes the recommended fiscal year 2526 service charges and the use of those charges. Based on changes to the Consumer Price Index, the allowable increase is 2.76%. However, the written report shows the staff is recommending not increasing the 2526 rates over last year. So, with that, just some quick highlights from the recent year from CSA 10. 50 Corridor TMA continued efforts to educate residents about sustainable transportation options. They hosted several bicycle repair events. They hosted several community bike rides along the American River Parkway, and they held educational workshops and community engagement events at the Vineyard Point Apartments. 50 Corridor TMA, in partnership with SAC County DOT and SAC RT, has begun exploring the possibility of adding another bus stop on SAC RT's E19 transit route. 50 TMA also contracted with Fair and Peers to reanalyze the travel patterns in this area, and the results showed the travel patterns have shifted pretty dramatically since the last time it was analyzed in 2017. So, as a result, the county is working with 50 TMA to explore other options for mobility services that have the highest potential to shift trips to sustainable modes. So, with that, if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony and comments, close the public hearing, and adopt the resolution.
Very good, thank you, Joe. Before I open the public hearing, Supervisor Desmond, I will just let you know that you made mention of the top three beards in Sacramento County, the gentleman who you represent. The gentleman who you represent, the number one beard in Sacramento.
I appreciate that. I'll take top 10, to be honest. I think one of the UPE speakers from this morning is a strong contender for top, for number one, so.
With that, if there are no further, if there are no questions for Mr. Grassick, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak on this matter?
We do not.
Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for a vote. Is there a motion?
I will go ahead and move the recommended action.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Hume.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good. Thank you.
Moving on to item 49 is the County of Sacramento Landscape Maintenance District, Zone 4, Public Hearing on Proposed Assessment for Fiscal Year 2526. Confirm the assessment diagram and levy assessments.
Good morning, Chair Serna, members of the Board. Lupi Rodriguez with the Transportation Department, and today I'm here to make a short presentation on the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District, Zone 4, the public hearing on proposed assessment for fiscal year 202526. So a little background, the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District was formed in 1994, consolidating many landscape and lighting districts in the county. The district provides funding for the maintenance of public landscape corridors, roadway landscape medians, and natural open space throughout the unincorporated county. On May 20th, 2025, the engineer's report was filed with the Clerk of the Board, and resolution of intention was approved by the Board of Supervisors to levy and collect the assessments for the district for fiscal year 2526. The resolution of intention set today as a date and time for the, for a notice public hearing on said levy. The proposed fiscal year 2526 assessment rates are the same as those levied for the past 31 years, which is 4250 for parcel for residential properties and $66.51 per acre for commercial properties. So the projected revenues and expenditures indicated in the property assessments alone do not provide adequate funding for, to support the district operations. To cover the shortfall, an inter-fund transfer from the road fund of 768,120 to district funding is proposed and included in the Department of Transportation's fiscal year 202526 recommended budget. To levy the assessments in the fiscal year 2526, state law requires that the Board hold a public hearing on the proposed levy and adopt the resolution levying the assessments. So the recommended actions are as follows for today: Open the public hearing, consider public testimony and objections regarding the matter, and close the public hearing, and adopt the attached resolution to confirm the assessment diagram and levy assessments within the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 202526. So that concludes my presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Lupi. Any questions for Mr. Rodriguez before we open the public hearing? All right, hearing none. I will then go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
We do not have anyone sign up for item 49.
All right, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Second, please.
Okay, item 50 is the Assembly Bill 2561, Government Code Section 3502.3.
Good morning, Supervisors. Pleasure to be with you today, presenting 2561 as required by the statute. We have to present on vacancies, recruitment and retention challenges, as well as any positions that are over 20% vacant. So I've got some bad news, and I've got two pieces of good news. The bad news, we're on the list. The good news is, we've only got one. The county's general vacancy rate is about 10%, just slightly above where we'd like it to be. Single-digit vacancies is what you want to target for a really good number. But the good news is that this number is a decline from where we were two years ago at 14%. So I think, kudos to the DPS staff and our partners and the hiring managers for getting that number down. Our recruitment efforts, I think, are exemplary. Over 140 career fairs in all five of our districts, 1,000 attendees at career fairs and events around the county, training for how to navigate the civil service exam process, and our participation on the various social media platforms. But there are opportunities for improvement, and they begin with our civil service plans. We have opportunities to reach broader markets, to connect with more candidates, and to offer jobs faster, but we have to revisit our current civil service rules. And that will require greater partnership with our partners there and our ability to look beyond where we are today. The limitations for on-the-spot hiring are also another challenge. Many of our candidates come with jobs already, so any delay in giving them the job opportunity poses a risk to us in losing that talent. Appeals to the minimum qualification process will have to be scheduled with the Civil Service Commission, and that can take one, two, or three months sometimes just to schedule. So these are areas that we certainly would like to partner with to get resolution there. But on to the facts. So of the 30 bargaining units, only one bargaining unit met the threshold of 20% or greater. And if you look at this, am I doing this thing?
Oh. It's a little.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the list of, thank you, thank you. I conclude my presentation. So right on, these are the list of all the bargaining units, and you'll see on this, oh my gosh, I am so sorry, on this page. Anyway, it's the 27.5, I can't see it. It's the Association of Professional Engineers, and it's our engineering classification that's giving us the greatest challenge. But I want to commend all the departments who have engineers, DGS, Water Resources, Transportation, that have partnered with us to try and figure out ways we can navigate through this. And I'm pleased to report today that that number is reduced by four, so we're now just under 14% vacancies. So that would mean if we were reporting today, we wouldn't have to report. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you, Joe. Any questions for Mr. Angelo? Okay, hearing none. This is just a receipt of presentation, Madam Clerk?
Yes, this is just a receive and file, and we do, we do have a public comment on this item as well.
Okay, all right, then we'll go to public comment.
Okay, that would be Noel Pacheco.
My name is Noel Pacheco. I'm an Associate Civil Engineer with the Department of Transportation, and I am the President of Apex, which represents Bargaining Unit 23. I do feel compelled to speak today on behalf of the only bargaining unit that meets that 20% threshold. I would like to start off by saying that I think Apex has a very good working relationship with the Department of, or the Office of Labor Relations, so I'm very happy to say that. I do think that this problem requires some additional creative thinking on how to address this issue. We've worked in negotiations to get in flexible staffing, which I think flexible staffing will be a big benefit in terms of allowing assistants and associates to, for assistants to automatically be moved into the associate level Bargaining 23, which will, I think, help facilitate the vacancy rate issue. I will say that I think that it will probably redistribute some of the vacancy rate issue from Bargaining Unit 23 to Bargaining Unit 22, so I do have some concerns about that. But I'm excited to work with the county on developing that proposal and that policy on flexible staffing. You know, some of the proposals, non-economic proposals, that, you know, I don't begrudge the county has some compaction issues when dealing with negotiation with our union. They can't offer us additional salary without it impacting bargaining units above us, and we understand that. I do think that there are some non-economic proposals that can also be moved forward, and I would like to see additional engagement with the Department of, or the Office of Labor Relations and DPS in terms of working collaboratively with the union throughout the year and not just every three years in negotiations. I think there's an opportunity for us to partner on what other solutions can be implemented. One of the solutions that was offered during negotiations actually came from upper management. It was not our idea originally. It was upper management's idea, was to allow highly qualified candidates coming to the county with their professional engineering license already to come in at a higher vacation accrual rate, similar to what we allow for higher salary step levels. This, I think, would be fundamental for facilitating recruitment issues at, for Bargaining Unit 23. And I do see that my time is out. But again, I just want to say that I think that there is additional opportunity to work creatively, for the Office of Labor Relations to work creatively, not only with the union, but also with upper management that is seeing these retention and recruitment issues.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, does that conclude our public speakers?
That concludes your public comments, yes.
All right, very good. Then we are, that's a presentation as well, correct?
We have one more item, yes, for this morning, before you go to closed session.
No, I understand that. I'm just clarifying that there's no vote on this side.
Oh, yes, sorry about that, sir, yeah. This is a receive and file.
Okay, very good. All right, next item, please.
Yes, item 51 is the Letter on Senate Bill 802 regarding the Sacramento Area Housing and Homelessness Agency Multi-Family Housing Program Home Key Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program.
Good morning, Chair Serna and members of the Board. I'm Alicia DeBoer, Governmental Relations and Legislative Officer, here to request that you consider and all members sign an opposition letter to Senate Bill 802 by Senator Ashby. The language for this bill was first made public June 24th. SB 802 creates a state-mandated joint powers authority to oversee housing and homeless programs in Sacramento County. It designates Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency to serve as the new JPA, however expanded and renamed, with the current SHRA Executive Director serving as the head. This Board will lose its current decision-making power and control of funding if passed. SB 802 redirects county-administered homeless and housing programs and funding to the new JPA, as well as the Continuum of Care and Other Housing Funding and Programs administered by cities in the county. Sacramento County is on record in opposition to this measure, along with the impacted cities of Sacramento, Elk Grove, Folsom, Rancho Cordova, Citrus Heights, urban counties of California, and numerous community organizations, leaders, coalitions, unions, because it usurps local authority and does not align with their ongoing efforts to collaborate on the delivery of homeless and housing programs. This bill is moving quickly, and it can become final in September and made law in January. The letter before you raises federal and state legal concerns and analyzes impacts of transferring federal, local funds to the newly-formed JPA. So I look to you for input and approval, and I'm here to answer your questions, along with our Deputy County Executive Siobhan and Counsel.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, I am suspecting that there may be comments that my colleagues want to share. I'll start with Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Well, you know, thank you very much, Alicia, for taking the lead on this. I greatly opposed it from the beginning, and I'm glad that we are sending an opposition letter, or we have submitted it. And so I also want to thank you for your leadership on making some of this opposition and the steps that are taken to ensure that the county as a whole has, which sounds like it was opposed from every city within the county, is, will be present to share their voice. Thank you.
And thank you, Vice Chair. I will just tack on, before we go to others, that I want, I just want to thank Supervisor Rodriguez. I don't subscribe to, nor do I read, the Sacramento Bee. I haven't in years. But I'm told that she submitted and had published a thoughtful editorial expressing the reasons, some of the reasons why we hold the position, and that certainly she holds a position that she does. So I want to thank her for being.
Thank you.
As public as she has about that. So we'll then go to Supervisor Desmond?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Alicia. I had a few comments and questions about this. I guess, I want to preface any of my comments and questions with, first, just recognizing Senator Ashby. I certainly appreciate her interest in seeing a more collaborative, coordinated approach in Sacramento County. I think, I think we all do. I think we all appreciate that. But I think we kind of captured in this letter that this language was introduced without really engaging with the county and with other elected leaders in Sacramento County. And I think if her office had done that, and hopefully she, she still will, she would learn about what, the tremendous progress we have made. And I look back at a few things, a heck of a lot more to do, obviously, and Supervisor Rodriguez has highlighted some of these things, both in her op-ed and certainly comments from the DIAS up here. But the first place I look is the partnership agreement with the city and the county. Took over two years to develop that thing, because this is such a complex issue. And we are looking at dramatic restructuring right now of the COC, and Sacramento steps forward, providing more scrutiny of SHRA. I know we all appreciate the work that they do, but it certainly calls for us taking a deeper dive into some things and seeing how we can improve that. We're doing all of that right now. And I think, you know, if you were to read this bill, you would not have the sense that we're doing anything to coordinate or collaborate in Sacramento County. So I guess my first question to you, Alicia, and maybe Siobhan, what's the status of our discussions with the author's office and with committee staff right now on this bill?
Well, we first met with Senator Ashby, as you're aware, on May 22nd, and she didn't mention this bill, and we were talking about this particular subject. We also had a follow-up June 30th with the office, and the office was very clear that we'll hear you, but we're not changing anything, so.
Okay. So we haven't seen any, Siobhan, did you have?
Yeah, I'll just add that we have been meeting with different legislators over this bill from both the Housing Committee, as well as the Local Government Committee. Those will go to hearings next week, and so we've just wanted to outline some of our concerns, key concerns with this bill, including, as Alicia raised, the legal concerns with the bill, not only legal concerns around the JPA law, but also around laws concerning transfer of finances, local finances, to a new JPA, as well as lifting up concerns about local control and ensuring that each of the elected bodies in our county, the county board, as well as each of our city councils, retains local control over decisions that are made, because we know how important that is for our local elected officials.
Okay, and thank you, Siobhan. Yeah, the legal issues that are identified in this letter, I think, are really compelling, in my opinion, in addition to the policy concerns that we have, I think we've all articulated in various discussions and in published documents. What is the plan? I think it's coming for hearing, what, the 16th, in front of the Assembly Housing Committee? Alicia, where else were, what will be the path of this bill? Someone told me yesterday it might end up being triple-referred. Can you just talk to me a little bit about the procedurally, where it will go?
Yeah. So July 16th, it will be heard in the Assembly Housing Community Development Committee, and then the same day referred to the Local Government Committee hearing in the afternoon. And then the legislature will be on recess for a month, so that will be the last hearing. So after a month, when they return between August 18th and September 12th, it will make its rounds through Assembly Appropriations, Assembly Floor, and then back to the Senate for either a floor vote or to Senate Housing, so.
So it's just the two policy committee? Okay, so someone had mentioned that it was going to be triple-referred, but maybe they were referring, yeah, maybe they were referring to appropriations or something, which is not a policy committee, obviously. And I appreciate you indulging me a little bit, because I think it's important to flesh this out in a public hearing and make a record of this right now. The one question I had, just the mechanics of the bill, is, is it, am I reading it correctly? I mean, to me, it looks like this would, this would really supplant all of our housing, this would go well above and beyond just SHRA's current duties in terms of affordable housing. This would encompass everything that we do in terms of our homeless prevention and response. Is that, is that an accurate reading?
Absolutely. So currently, the Continuum of Care Board has appointed the lead entity as Sacramento steps forward. What this bill does is it, it. as Sacramento steps forward. What this bill does is it takes SHRA, it expands their scope to be the homeless lead within the county, making them not only leading the Continuum of Care Board, but also the, becoming the lead entity for homelessness. And it directs the transferring of different funding sources that are outlined in the letter to SHRA away from the local jurisdictions that currently receive them, which include the county and the cities. It also would redirect some of local dollars, not only the state and federal dollars, but local dollars, including impact fees to this newly formed JPA.
So, Siobhan, our own Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars that we recently used on an affordable housing project in unincorporated Sacramento County, that those funds would be put into this entity?
Correct. That is my reading of the bill. And we are analyzing the fiscal impacts as well. We've highlighted some of them in the letter, but we believe there's more fiscal impacts, that we need more time to analyze how exactly those dollars would flow. And frankly, the constitutionality of whether or not the state legislature, state legislature could redirect those dollars without local decisions to do that.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'm very supportive of the letter. I've informed Senator Ashby of my own opposition. I know that she's disappointed in that, but I really encourage her to maybe step back and have discussions with us because I think she is in a unique position to convene, I think, leaders here locally and have a discussion about what... And it may not require a legislative change in terms of this coordination and collaboration, but I think she could be an amazing partner with us. My only suggestion, which I'm not suggesting a change to the letter, but certainly in terms of our messaging to both Senator Ashby's office and the, and the Policy Committee staff and other members, is really to highlight the amount of coordination and collaboration we have already done, and that is in the offing right now. So, because I don't think we put enough of a point or underscore that quite enough. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'll just say that while we were on recess, I had a text exchange with the Senator to appreciate her leaning in on this issue, but to ask that she put a pause on this current effort in order to work with us so that we are going ground up rather than top down in looking for solutions. And that's really my biggest objection to this and to this bill and what's being proposed, is that it's prescribing a fix before we fully understand the malfunctioning. And I think that we have taken a pretty concerted effort here on this body to ask for greater transparency and accountability and oversight from the agency which stands to benefit from this legislation. I don't know if that was an impetus into why the sense of urgency of prescribing this bill, but the irony is not lost on me that in the effort to demand collaboration, the only collaboration that's resulted is that every agency, except for that agency which will benefit, has come out in opposition to this proposed legislation. And I think it ignores the efforts we have been making to restructure some of the local things. It ignores the efforts that have been made to address some of the issues within and surrounding how we address homelessness. And I agree with my colleague that there is a lot more that needs to be done. But as we are starting to examine and really put a microscope to things, I don't think going to a larger mega-agency centralization of efforts is the solution. And I said as much to the Senator. So I appreciate her zeal and her zest, but I support this letter, and frankly, I don't think the wording is strong enough. I mean, really, this, this stabs an arrow through the heart of local control, and I don't see that as being beneficial. And the other thing is, the actual agency providing the Continuum of Care, which is a federally mandated function, is scarcely mentioned in the bill at all, not by name, certainly. And so I think that it's, it's an overreach. I think that while it's maybe well-intentioned, it's not the solution I would seek. And I think that, you know, we have asked for an audit in order to examine the efficacy and effectiveness of the agency as it exists and have yet to have that information presented. And so to put more power and more funding and more, whatever you want to call it, you know, authority into that agency, it just, it's, it's jumping, putting the cart before the horse. And so I hope that we can just convince the Senator to back off the gas a little bit on this effort, work with us, because for every city and the county and the Continuum of Care to all be opposed ought to signal that, that we're not interested in, in having our future foisted upon us. So let's work together, would be my ask, and hopefully she'll, she'll be receptive to that message. Thank you. But I do support the letter.
Thank you, Supervisors. I appreciate always the fact that I have a chance to work with you all who give a great deal of thought to all matters that come before us. But I think even while we're on recess, attempting to spend time with our families and take a much-needed pause in kind of our daily expectations that we're drinking from a firehouse continually, the fact that we have rallied around making it clear and assessing and explaining the rationale why we hold the position that we do during our recess, I really want to first start by thanking you all for, in your own ways, being there to, to do exactly that. And I certainly would be remiss if I didn't publicly thank all of our professional staff, Alicia and Siobhan and Emily, David Villanueva, and others who have been willing and able to really help us do a very swift but necessary deep dive on why this bill, and there's no other way to put it, at least from my perspective, really represents bad policy. And it is unfortunate that the author has put such a comprehensive, has suggested such a comprehensive change very last minute, as it got an amend, to a bill that I believe she first initiated in the early spring, late winter, February, March timeline, that at the time was laudable. I mean, there's, the language, if you look back, was attempting to, I think, focus attention, rightfully so, on foster youth and domestic violence, victimization, and some of the, I think, the well-made points relative to those populations that we should, we should be focused on in the context of homelessness and housing. But really to suggest such an overhaul, when, as my colleagues have just referenced, we can look back and see successes in terms of cooperation, collaboration, and I would say not just with the city of Sacramento, but with the other municipalities in Sacramento County. And as soon as, a month from now, maybe not even that, we are going to have in public another opportunity to really understand from staff and hear from various interest parties about, you know, SHRA and their role, past, present, and future, what it all means relative to how our Continuum of Care and our ability to support affordable housing would work best and should work better. No one, no one, by the way, is arguing against the Senator that we can and should do things better. I think it's really, this is really comes down to how do we, how do we, how do we achieve that? And so, you know, there is a ton of momentum, I would say, of interest in achieving just that. Now, what hasn't been said so far is the fact that through my office and working with primarily Councilmember Guerra, City of Sacramento, we're eagerly looking forward to a, I think it's a first-of-its-kind meeting, at least in terms of the parties that will literally be at the dais of the city council, of the city of Sacramento, all five of us from the county, and the mayors of the other cities within Sacramento County, to spend a full day in public to talk about this very subject, about how to do things better, how to be more effective. Ultimately, we can all agree that the, the goal here is not a different governance structure, it's not a new agency, it's not even a different agency. Those should be byproducts of us coming up with a blueprint of how to be more effective, of how to make sure that we see fewer people that are living on our streets and our storefronts, beneath our bridges and in our parkways. And quite frankly, the other metric that we must always consider is, especially given the prolonged housing crisis here in the, in the state, is housing people more efficiently, quicker, giving them the opportunity to, to help themselves. Let's not forget, they are a party to this as well. So, again, very unfortunate that this bill overreaches the way it does. I think we can all tell by the collective opposition and the very little support, quite frankly, that the bill enjoys and that the bill would otherwise enjoy is from the very parties that need to be at the table, not on the menu here. So, again, I want to thank our staff. I do want to give some direction here. I think it's important direction. The, the letter is, I think, has been carefully crafted to, to communicate the reasons why Sacramento County opposes vehemently this proposal the, the way we do, especially those, those legal arguments that I agree with Supervisor Desmond, I think, are, it's really kind of the crux of the matter. But as to those legal matters, I do think, because of our significant legal concerns, that, that we've identified thus far, thus far, I would like counsel, and I assume Ms. Travis is, is sitting there next to you, Flo, to do more formal analysis on the bill, and we have it be returned before the board in public so that we understand just how solid we think those legal arguments are. And that may actually take us spending some resources for, for outside assistance. But when you think about what this bill is in part attempting to do in terms of forcing, forcing us to enter into a new GPA, JPA, that, you know, that raises and should raise a lot of legal questions. And even, I will note, Sacramento Mayor Kevin McCarty, who, as we all know, introduced a bill last year that would provide some advice, and that's a big distinction, it was advisory, in terms of a prospective new governance structure. But that's why even as the former author of that bill, I don't think I'm going out on a limb here, that's why even the mayor and the former Assembly Member strongly opposes the bill the way he does. So, again, Siobhan, I would like to hear from you just briefly that you acknowledge what I'm requesting, and, and if Ms. Travis has any comments, I'd be pleased to hear from her as well.
Absolutely. I acknowledge and will work with Ms. Travis on this issue.
And I will take your request and implement that, certainly.
All right, very good. And then finally, I know I've been long-winded. I'll, I'll end where I think Supervisor Desmond started, which is, this is not about wanting to be at odds with our Senator. We welcome and would embrace having her and her staff very, very much involved, even leading us relative to, to collaboration and doing things better. That's going to take time. This is the most complicated, complex matter in front of any local government, larger, small, county or city. And so just want to make it clear, this is not about personality differences, this is not about our histories maybe being on different sides of things. This is really about wanting to do it carefully, thoughtfully, collaboratively. And so that welcome mat remains open to the Senator, and we would hope that, that she would avail herself to, to that, to that welcome. Okay, we do need to vote on this matter. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak on the matter from the public?
We do not have anyone signed up for this item.
Supervisor Serna, before you make your vote, this David Villanueva, I just wanted to confirm that the letter stands as you would like. I had two supervisors make suggestions or thoughts towards it, and I just want to confirm that this is going to stand.
If those supervisors who may have made those comments, that was lost on me, that that was introduced as formal amendment, but I don't think it was, you tell me. It's difficult to assess that from afar here.
I'm seeing no additional changes to the letter, so thank you for confirming that.
I'll go ahead and move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisors Desmond, Rodriguez?
Aye.
Hume?
Yes.
Serna?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that concludes our morning session, Madam Clerk.
Yes, it does.
Okay, we are scheduled for what appears to be a bit of a lengthy closed session, and we do have a full afternoon calendar. So it is currently 12:15. Again, I'm going to have to participate remotely. I understand that the technology is all set up for me to do so in closed session. I would suggest that we convene in closed session at 12:30, if that's agreeable to my colleagues.
Sounds good.
Okay. With that, there's no further business before us for this morning session. We stand in recess.
Mr. Chair, we're working on the audio. Mr. Serna, oh. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, now we can hear you. Okay.
Am I good to open the meeting or not?
We can go ahead and reconvene.
I'd like to call to order, back to order this meeting, Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll and reestablish form?
Yes. Good afternoon, Supervisors Desmond, Rodriguez?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. And let me start by first offering my apologies to those that have been patiently waiting for us to reconvene. We had a very full closed session. We did not take any lunches, so lest there be any conjecture about us doing anything, doing anything else other than participating in closed session, that's where we were. And again, my apologies for the lateness of the hour. So, Madam Clerk, my understanding is we have one speaker, one member of the public that waited patiently this morning for off-agenda matters, and I believe she had to leave. So we are going to take up that one speaker first, and then we will go through our agenda as published.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to call up Barbara.
Thank you, thank you. I feel really special. So, thank you, Board of Supervisors. So I just wanted to say, I recently was at the jail, and we were welcoming people who were being released from the jail, but we don't understand why people are being released from the jail between 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM. Because if... released from the jail between 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM, because if they need any resources, nobody answers their phone after like 5:00 PM, so we're not able to really get them the resources they need. But I have two stories, and one story is this man told me he was going, walking to his car in the morning, going to work, and it was parked next to a stolen car, a stolen truck. And the police or the sheriffs, I don't remember which one, accused him of stealing the truck. He's like, I have a truck, why would I steal a truck? And they took him in, and so he was one of the people who was released, and he said to me, as his family was picking him up in their SUV BMW, now I have to go save my job. And this other woman told me that she was going to turn herself in, she had missed her arraignment, I don't even know what an arraignment is, most people don't, she missed her arraignment period, our appointment, and so she thought she was going to spend five days in jail, and she's like, I'll spend five days in jail, weird, but okay. But the sheriff told her, if she turns herself in, she's spending 155 days in jail. She's like, I have a daughter, I have a job, I have a house, I can't spend 155 days in jail. So the point of this is, we're sort of creating homeless people. If you lose your job, you lose your house. And these two folks, I don't know what the woman was supposed to have done, but the man didn't do anything except walk to his car and end up in jail. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, can we try releasing people during business hours so we can get them some help? Thank you.
I would suggest, and I don't know, Mr. CEO, if it's possible, I'm not, I can't see who from our executive team is in chambers or not, but in terms of the release times, there's a lot of nuance to it, some of which is actually constitutional. So I would offer that Barbara should probably hear from, at least have maybe a phone conversation at the very least, someone from the Public Defender's Office, so that can be shared in terms of why releases happen when they do.
Supervisor, Deputy County Executive Eric Jones is also here, so we'll put them together too, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next item.
Okay, for item 52, this is the Sacramento County Youth Commission Annual Report.
Good afternoon, Chair Serna, members, board members, and County Executive David Villanueva, and executive leadership team. My name is Rochelle Rolonka, and I'm the advisor to the Youth Commission. The Youth Commission is bringing forth their annual report, and will be giving the board an update on activities related to racial and economic justice, civic engagement, public health, education, and environmental advocacy. I would like to introduce the executive members who are with us today, Joyce Lynn, our commission chair, and Diana Haas, social media chair. I'll turn it over to Chairperson Lynn, who would like to say a few opening words and introduce the other commissioners.
Thank you. Good afternoon, we are the Sacramento County Youth Commission, and we're excited to be able to report our accomplishments this past year, as well as inform you of our upcoming projects. The Board of Supervisors' support is integral for our work, so we would like to thank you for your help and look forward to increasing amounts of collaboration in the future. My name is Joyce Lynn, and I am the Chair of the Youth Commission. I am proud to stand alongside another senior, Celine Kin, who is a dedicated member of the Commission. I know she would do amazing things in both her academic and community organizing careers. Another commission, other commission leaders include Vice Chairperson Jolie Deng and Secretary Mackenzie Olmstead. Some commissioners who have served the community this past year include Brooklyn Pruitt, Joy McDaniel, Jolie Deng, Diana House, Marissa Vaughn, and Mackenzie Olmstead. Others include Emmanuel Amanfor, Jamie Stevenson, Justin Huang, and Kushi Shukla. The Sacramento County Youth Commission is a 15-member advisory board for Sacramento youth. Three commissioners from each of our five supervisorial districts serve on the Commission in three-year terms. The Commission was established as a leadership panel providing an advocating voice to the county's youth, notifying the Board of Supervisors of youth-related activities and concerns. In the past year, our Commission aimed to build a more prominent presence within the community. We initiated collaborations with local organizations and schools, including Three Sisters Garden and Helen Carr Castella Elementary School. We also wanted to foster stronger social media networks that promoted youth events throughout the county, including events that we could attend as individuals or table as a commission. The development of promotional materials also opens up opportunities to connect with youth across the county on an individual level, promoting civic engagement with youth involvement and bureaucracy. As a result of prioritizing collaboration and networking, we have been able to establish connections with nonprofits and local youth for current and future projects. We were also able to foster a larger online community of passionate youth interested in getting involved. These new connections will allow us to build a larger audience and cause a larger impact in future newsletters and events. We are extremely excited to see what we will be able to accomplish in the future as we build upon the progress we've made thus far. Within the Commission, we decided to focus on five prominent issues that impact youth across the county. We continued racial and economic justice and education from 2024. Environmental care was renamed to environmental advocacy, not to only bring awareness but also to promote action. Voter engagement became civic engagement to broaden our focus to youth participation in government as a whole. And health and safety was renamed public health, so we could focus on all perspectives of health, including physical, mental, and emotional. The Racial and Economic Justice Subcommittee aims to advance the socio-economic conditions of the county's marginalized and historically underserved youth populations. We work to bridge youth disparities and provide materials for the underprivileged with an all-encompassing goal to create opportunities. The Subcommittee includes Chair Celine Kin, as well as Commissioners Jolie Deng, Joyce Lynn, Joy McDaniel, and myself, M.J. Vaughn. This year, the Racial and Economic Justice Subcommittee participated in two statewide listening sessions with nonprofit organizations as youth-serving think tanks focusing on educational equality and representation. We established partnerships with Amado Caia Initiative and Elevate Youth California to create policy recommendations that involve many diverse perspectives. While highlighting Sacramento County youth, the listening sessions were able to bring in many viewpoints and garnered lively discussions about future sessions. Through this next fiscal year, we aim to corroborate youth testimonies and data through listening sessions and community outreach for the Youth Bill of Rights that we have been working on these past few years. We also plan to continue collaborations with local organizations regarding event tabling and create research reports to accurately represent and advocate for the needs of Sacramento's marginalized youth. We are confident in our ability to continue the community engagement and networking opportunities with nonprofits that hold similar goals.
The Environmental Advocacy Subcommittee was created to bring attention to an issue often discarded and downplayed amidst seemingly more dire issues. Climate change and sustainability, however, requires immediate action in order to prevent its long-term, extremely harmful consequences. This Subcommittee includes co-chairs Joyce Lynn and Brooklyn Pruitt, as well as Commissioners Diana Haas, Mackenzie Olmstead, and Emmanuel Amanfor. In the past year, we initiated a partnership with Helen Carr Castella Elementary School, where we organized garden cleanups to provide, to provide an interactive learning environment for students. We also discussed implementing an informational program during the school year to introduce sustainable habits such as composting to our county's youth. Within the past few months, we've also established a collaboration with the Three Sisters Garden and an upcoming informational carnival alongside over 15 environmental organizations. This year, we plan on continuing our collaboration with the Three Sisters Garden at the upcoming carnival. We would also like to turn to social media to create informational posts promoting more sustainable lifestyles, as well as spread awareness on the consequences of climate change, both local and global. While this task may seem daunting, it is surprising how much little habit changes can help when many people can commit to a cause.
The Civic Engagement Subcommittee works to encourage youth participation in local events to raise political efficacy across the county. We want to help youth understand government to inspire influential minds who understand the impact they can make in policy. The Subcommittee is chaired by myself, M.J. Vaughn, and also includes Commissioners Emmanuel Amanfor, Diana Haas, Brooklyn Pruitt, and Celine Quinn. This year, we focused on spreading information about the 2024 presidential election and encouraged youth vote pre-registration. We helped youth access public resources to create informed viewpoints of local and national politics. Through online platforms and community events, we were able to help youth pre-register to vote and better understand the confusing world of politics. While we focused on the election this last year, we plan to broaden our horizons through a civic engagement forum targeting students at schools. We would like to promote youth participation in local politics through staying informed and finding ways to get involved. We also plan on hosting informational sessions for passionate students who don't know how to start learning about local government but would like to learn. The Public Health Subcommittee aims to spread awareness about the consequences of substance abuse on a wide scale. We also targeted the importance of physical, mental, and emotional health for students specifically. The Subcommittee is co-chaired by Joyce Lynn and Joy McDaniel, and includes Commissioners Jolie Deng and Mackenzie Olmstead. This year, the Public Health Subcommittee continued publishing various monthly public health newsletters that highlighted topics including, but not limited to, student mental health amongst school stress and anxiety, cancer awareness and domestic violence. These newsletters were shared across our social media platforms for our online audiences. We also hosted a winter canned food drive in high schools across the county for local food banks and pantries during the holidays. We have loved seeing the impact of our monthly newsletters and found it to be an extremely accessible form of communication with youth, youth across the county. So we plan on continuing them while finding other topics to highlight each month. We would also like to provide informational materials and the necessary tools to tend to someone who is overdosing, which is another topic we'd like to focus on in the upcoming
The Education Subcommittee was continued from last year due to its prominence in Sacramento County today. We aim to bring awareness to educational disparity and provide educational materials to Sacramento County youth to bridge that gap. This Subcommittee includes co-chairs Joyce Lynn and Mackenzie Olmstead, as well as Commissioners Diana Haas, Joy McDaniel, and M.J. Vaughn. We love involving the community in our efforts to provide materials, so we organized a book drive that collected hundreds of books for local students and libraries. This drive collected books for children of all ages so that any child interested in reading has the opportunity to do so. We also designed commission bookmarks highlighting each Subcommittee to promote reading at any local events that we attend or table. For this next fiscal year, we are planning on doing another book drive from students for students, but we would like to add another step afterwards, a giveaway event that directly provides books to students that they need. Children would be able to stop by and find a book that they can enjoy with easy access. We would also like to continue spreading awareness of educational disparity across the county and provide resources to help combat it on our social media platforms.
Furthermore, we would like to highlight not only our actions as a commission, but as individual youth advocates in the county. We like to encourage individuals to find ways to involve themselves in the community as civically engaged youth, not just as part of the Sacramento County Youth Commission. Commissioners independently attended, volunteered, emceed, and assisted in outreach for the Stand Up Speak Out statewide conference hosted at UC Davis this past year. With over 300 students and community leaders in attendance across California, Commissioners hosted two panel conversations about youth leadership and multiculturalism, aiming to introduce conversation between many diverse perspectives across the state. As we continue to represent youth in the Youth Commission, we also aim to continue making an impact in our communities as individual advocates for our fellow youth. Thank you for listening, are there any questions?
Right, well, thank, thank you to all the Youth Commission presenters and those that may not be joining you in chambers today but might be listening. This is always a part of our agenda that we look forward to each year, and I think as was referenced, you really all do a fantastic job of taking on subject matter that is really relevant to our everyday lives and things as large as climate change, but the other matters that are as intimate as how to improve upon mental health policy. So really want to, again, congratulate you on a job very well done. You represent us well, you take to heart your charge as Commissioners, and I suspect that many of you are going to go on and do great things in life, not just whether or not you pursue a college degree or an advanced degree, but whatever it is that you might choose, whatever your profession might be, I could already tell, we can already tell, that is really going to be steeped in helping others, and that is something that we're fortunate to have here in Sacramento County, these young people like yourselves that invest so much in making tomorrow better than it is today. So thank you. And at this point, I'd look to my colleagues to see if they'd like to share any comments.
I do have some. I, I just want to say, it is very impressive, the work that you all do throughout our county, and the, some of the topics that you all are touching are really important for today's youth and even those that are becoming young adults. You know, I have the pleasure this summer of working with Brooklyn Pruitt as one of our interns, and it's very exciting to have Brooklyn be a part of this Commission, but now also spend the summer with us and learning more about government, and even getting to know a little more about what some long-term goals are. But I am grateful for the work that you do. If there's one topic that I think that youth should be more aware of, about the realities, about how it comes about, is human trafficking, because it is affecting young people today. Young women are, are, are being drawn into this world, and so I just, you know, at some point in one of, some of the years to come, is that have that be a topic of discussion that is more talked about openly, about how it happens, how people end up getting groomed into this, into this lifestyle, and then how difficult it is to get out, and so any kind of prevention we can do on human trafficking would be greatly appreciated from your Commission, but great job, y'all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. Yeah, we can discuss that at our August meeting, so.
Very good, great suggestion. Any others on the desk that would like to comment?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to address this matter?
We do not, and Mr. Chair, we're going to take a picture of the youth as a group, and then I'll let you know when we go on to the next two items. I'll be reading.
Can you, can you hold up an iPad with, with me on it in the back?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm going to be reading items eight and 53 in together, so.
Before you, before you do that, before you do that, we have 11 items in front of us, and it is after four o'clock, so for those items that have come with a, an otherwise prolonged, detailed, and certainly much appreciated staff report, I am going to respectfully ask staff that are in the wings, that are prepared to speak to their subjects, their items, their agenda items, to please consider your best attempt at abbreviation. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, for item eight, this is to adopt the First Plan Amendment to Retiree Health Savings Plan. Item 53 is to approve various labor agreements and the Unrepresented Pay Plan.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Before you, our 11 agreements representing 14 units, and we ask for your support and approval. Thank you.
Just like that, that's the way, that's perfect, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, any comments from board members? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, do we have? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
We do. We have 11 speakers for Item 53, and I will call the first speaker, Sarah Singleton.
Hello, Supervisors. I'm Sarah Singleton. I am the Vice Chair of the 008 Governing Board, and I'm an emergency response social worker. I do not have any opinion about the labor agreements coming before you. I'm happy they were able to make a deal, but so far, UPE, the 008 Board, has not. I would like to touch on, again, the median, how you come to the salary proposal. I know for the Board of Supervisors, there was a salary survey, and it came out that the Board of Supervisors was under the median, and therefore you received quite a large pay raise. There was also a salary survey for social workers in Sacramento County, and it showed that we were 7% below the median. We requested 5, just to get somewhere near the median, and we were offered 2. So, my question is, you know, an article I read said that Sacramento County tried to get workers just above the median. And I'd like to know, you know, the Supervisors were worth getting above the median. Why aren't your social workers? We do hard work. You do hard work. I respect the work that you do. I just would ask for some of that respect in return. The jobs that we do... At least the jobs that we do, the job that I do in Child Protective Services, that's going to come with a lifetime of second-degree trauma. This year, I got to see a brain-dead baby. Last year, I saw a set of twins with broken ribs. Two of the kids on my caseload were shot within two weeks of each other. So, just keep that in mind. That'll be with me for the rest of my life, which will affect my longevity, my mental health. So, just think about that when you're offering, you know, equity raises for your social workers. Thank you.
Keisha? Keisha Truitt?
Okay, I'm going to mind myself now and just behave. Whatever you do with any other contract from any other union, your business, but not UPE. Everyone in here stands with UPE, and we deserve a respectful, dignified contract. You will not shut down UPE. You will not tell our members that our union cannot protect us. You will not take away any right that we know is lawfully ours to fight for. UP is going to continue to stand and continue to fight for what we deserve. Who are we?
UPE!
Give us what we deserve. I don't begrudge you anything. I don't envy no one. I don't covet nobody. You got 36% as a raise, and you say that every other checking sum gets taken out. It should be every check if it was a mistake. We deserve our raises for our families. You are keeping funds, food, health privileges away from these people that help you. We help you look good. And we will continue to do so, because many of us in here, as I said before, we did not get into this job to be a millionaire. I know I didn't, because it ain't going to happen. I worked to help that community out there, because as a child, I was one of those homeless kids. We deserve your respect. You need to help us. Help us continue helping you, or as I said, we could remove you.
Rachel? Rachel Kelly? We'll move to the next person, but we'll keep Rachel's name on the list in case she's in one of the overflow rooms. James?
Greetings, Chairman Serna and County Supervisors. My name is James Starr. I'm Chair of the UPE Board of Directors, and I'm a 40-year county employee, so I beat John by five years. I'm speaking about the labor contracts you're going to be voting on today. It's unfortunate that some of your employee groups have been duped into agreeing to the county's raid on their medical benefits. UPE members are not duped. We're not bamboozled. We're not fooled. We understand that if we agree to the county's proposed health re-opener, the county will pick our pockets at the back end through increases in out-of-pocket medical expenses. And pay raises become almost irrelevant, especially the pathetically inadequate pay raises you're currently offering. And UPE members have not forgotten that good old 36% pay raise you generously gave yourselves. Just one problem with that: you forgot about the people who actually do the work. That's us. Do you remember us now? UPE, stand up! Let them see you! Stand up! Remember us! We're not going away!
Okay. Is Rachel in the room? Okay, we'll move on to Adriana. We'll keep Rachel on the list, and we'll just move on to Rachel.
Good afternoon. I don't care what you do with other contracts, just not ours. I do want to say, my name is Adriana. I made the difficult decision to strike today all because the county leadership has a complete lack of compassion and value for its employees. Earlier today, you spoke on value. I want to educate you on just how the department values its employees. Our value and worth is reduced to complimentary breakfasts, barbecues, and popsicles for a job well done. We are worth more, and our families are worth more. I'm demanding the Board of Supervisors to do the right thing for once. Help provide its employees with a livable wage increase and keep your hands off our healthcare. Do the right thing and give us a fair contract.
Cassidy?
My name is Cassidy Burdick. I am a Human Services Specialist with Department of Human Assistance, and I started working with the county February of 2023. I just want to start by saying, is this how the county expects to celebrate 175 years of service? After seven, roughly seven months of failed negotiations and no contract, we have to wonder, what will it take to make you recognize our dignity, our rights, and our worth? Because the hard work we do does not appear to be enough to move the county to do what's right. You are our leaders. You are our bosses. You are our representatives. Patrick Kennedy, Rich Desmond, Phil Serna, Rosario Rodriguez, and Pat Hume, is this the legacy you want? Is this how you want to be remembered, as elected officials refusing to hear your people? We are here. We are real, so hear our voices. The only way I can understand the position and actions that you've taken is through the lens of greed. The message it sends is that the county will do everything it can to make us work as much as possible for as little as possible. But you have the power and you have the choice to make it right. Work with us to find a fair contract, because we are not going to take the disrespect. We are here to send our message. We will do everything we can to fight for what we are worth, and we will win.
Sylvia? Sylvia Garcia?
Good evening. I don't care what you do with your contracts or these contracts, but I'm speaking on ours, all of them, everybody here. When the Board of Supervisors recently gave themselves a 36% raise, it was an increase of over $46,000 to your salary. The county executive, who now makes $418,977.96, got over 16% raise. That was over $57,000. You, the Board of Supervisors, have many employees making less than your raises alone. And I don't even want to get into the county executive raise. The living wage for Sacramento for a single person is $26.76 an hour, minus, equals $55,661 a year. The living wage for one adult with one child is $48.84 an hour, minus $101,587 a year. The living wage for one adult with two children is $60.19 an hour, minus $125, $195 a year. Our last three contract did not keep up with inflation. Was lost 5.7% after the actual CPU numbers were adjusted with all the facts. Do the right thing for the people that make you look good, that do the work, and sacrifice their families to help other families.
Brenda Ria? Brenda Ria?
It's pronounced "Rae." It's pronounced "Rae." I'm so sorry. Okay. I don't care what you do with any other contracts. I'm just here to speak on UPE's contract and us. I'm not, everybody's talked about the pay raise. We need it. I'm not going to go there. I'm going to go with the healthcare. We should not have to negotiate what medical, that they want to negotiate what medical, increase our copayments, increase our premiums, and then give us a dinky raise and doesn't even cover what that is. They should stay off our medical, because not only is that, that's going to play with everybody's mental health and physical health, because you're not going to get the doctors that you've had. If you have specialists, you're not going to have those specialists anymore, because you've changed everything around. It's not okay. It's six months to get a new doctor if they change total medical plans. Six months later, I'm sorry, when are you going to see a neurologist? When are you going to see chemotherapy? You're not going to get that. So, stay off our medical. Leave it negotiated like it should be.
Thank you. My name's Seth Alexander. I'm Lead Business Agent with United Public Employees, Co-Chief Negotiator for the 008 Table, and it's been my absolute honor to represent these workers for the last 10 years. I want to start by drawing your attention to the chicken shit, illegal, union-busting tactics the County IT Department recently had. Our members were reading our message that we sent to them about our strike action today, and it was pulled from their inboxes, taken away from them. It didn't work. We're still here. These members here don't give a shit about what anybody else is getting. They deserve more. They deserve what they put in for this county. They do more work with less than anybody else. It's time to step up and represent them. They will not roll over and accept something that takes away their rights to bargain, threatens their healthcare, takes away relatives that are covered under family death leave. We're not going back. Why does the county need to race to the bottom? What's wrong with letting people take time off to take care of their family when they use a loved one? The county's message on healthcare is, trust us. We want to do what's best for you. How in the hell are we supposed to trust them when they won't allow us to communicate with our members, when they try to interfere in our ability to strike? It's against the law, and it's not right. And you're going to keep hearing about it until you all do the right thing. So, step up.
Kimmy P.
Hello. I didn't come here prepared to strike or prepared to speak. I am a probationary employee with the county, and this morning, when we showed up to work, we were asked to go and work in the bureaus to make up for the his workers that are striking today. And so, a few of us decided to also strike in solidarity, potentially. But, I wanted to say that we assist our customers in this community, but who is here to assist us? The contract that you have offered us is disrespectful at most and laughable at least. I am a single person. I live in Sacramento, no kids, no family, and I can't even afford to buy myself groceries. I have to say, do I get my car repaired, or do I eat? What are you all going to do about that? I Googled Phil Serna's salary. I'm assuming it's all of your salaries. $173,398 a year? $83 an hour? Do you know what we all could do with that? Hello? I pay almost $300 out of my paycheck for healthcare. Fix it.
Sabrina?
Hello. I'm Sabrina Riddle. First of all, just let me say how proud I am of all of us for coming out here and sacrificing. Very proud of our members today. I just want to say, do the right thing. We represent the county that you are supposed to be serving. I work for the Clerk Recorder's Office. We record hundreds of deeds every day, and the sad thing about it is that we'll probably never make enough to have our own grand deed, to own a property in Sacramento County. If I could just ask everyone here, by show of hands, who struggles to pay rent or is forced to live with family members, because you can't afford your own rent? That's unacceptable. We can barely survive. When I got this job, I was so happy. Oh, my God, I work for the county. I have a good job. I am struggling every day. Do I buy gas to get to work? My son needs new shoes, or my daughter needs something else, and it's just a struggle. We don't have the luxury that you guys have of your salaries to go ahead and say, I don't have, you don't have to choose between generic or, you know, can your daughter get the lucky charms that she's in the middle of the aisle crying for, because they're $7.99, and you can't afford them. You know what I'm saying? It's just heartbreaking that we have to struggle every single day, but we are the ones on the front line, putting our all into this, because this is all we have, you know? I just wish that, I mean, one day, maybe we could take your place. Maybe I'll file for candidacy to sit on the board. You know what I mean? Whatever it takes, because we all stick together. We just need you guys to support us. That's it. We're not asking for anything drastic. We're not asking for 36%. We're not even asking for 10%. But 2.8% is not even 70 cents for some of us. That's not going to make a difference whatsoever. We should at least be above the surrounding counties, or at least up there. That's all I'm saying. Just do the right thing and support us, like we support you.
Rachel Kelly? Are you here? Okay. We've had several attempts, Mr. Chair, for Ms. Rachel, but she's not here, so we're going to close this list, and that would conclude your public comments.
Very good. Thank you.
So we do have specific actions in front of us. I see several on my notes, but I assume we can just move a staff recommendation. So at this point, if there's no further discussion or comments from my colleagues, I look for a motion.
Do we need a motion for both items, eight and 53? No?
Now, clerk, we're in recess for 10 minutes.
One motion?
And rest of the form?
Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez, Hume, Serna?
Here.
Okay, and you have a quorum.
Mr. Chair, I'd go ahead and move items eight and 53.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
Very good, thank you. Will we have a motion in a second? Roll call vote, please.
Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez, Hume, Serna?
Aye.
Yeah, unanimous vote with those members present.
Next item, please.
Yes, okay, let me get there. Item 54, you're introducing an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code relating to land division and development, waiving full reading and continuing to July 22 for adoption. And the environmental determination is a notice of exemption.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Regina Weiss, and I am the lead planner for this project. Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code is the title adopted to supplement and implement the subdivision map act, as well as regulate land division and development within the county. The purpose of this project is to facilitate land development in the county by making changes consistent with board resolutions related to improving the development review process. Additionally, this ordinance will bring county code into compliance with state law, specifically Senate bills 684 and 1123. SB 684 has been in effect since July 2024 and allows multifamily zoned lots of five acres or less to be divided in up to 10 lots. SB 1123, in effect as of July 1 of this year, expands upon the provisions of SB 684. Subdivision maps utilizing SB 1123 will be processed similarly to how staff processes SB 9 lot splits. These projects will be processed administratively with an expedited timeframe of 60 days from complete application as set by state law. SB 1123 includes single-family zoned lots of up to 1.5 acres in addition to the multifamily zoned lots of up to five acres permitted under SB 684. The county's law and development standards do not apply to projects using SB 1123. This exhibit shows a 10-lot subdivision of a standard RD4 lot allowed by right under SB 1123. Please note, local agencies are not required to allow ADUs on lots created through SB 1123. This exhibit shows the same 10-lot subdivision as the previous exhibit with the addition of ADUs. As shown, the resulting 20 units on one original lot far exceed the development intensities and character of the surrounding area. As such, staff is recommending, as provided in Section 21 of the ordinance package, that the county does not allow ADUs or JADUs on lots created through SB 1123. In summary, this ordinance will bring the Sacramento County Code into compliance with current state law as summarized in previous slides. The application fee for SB 1123 projects that result in four or fewer parcels is $12,161, the same as the SB 9 application fee. The application fee for SB 1123 projects that result in five or more parcels, up to the maximum of 10, is $16,945. This ordinance will lower the hearing body for tentative subdivision maps that are consistent with existing zoning, specific plan, and general plan designations, excluding vesting maps, from the planning commission to the subdivision review committee. It will lower the hearing body for vesting maps from the Board of Supervisors to the Planning Commission, and will lower the hearing body for all map extensions from the original hearing body of the map entitlement to the Planning Director. Additionally, this ordinance will update or clarify outdated language, such as references to the Public Works Department, and correct grammatical errors and consistency in terminology. As such, Planning and Environmental Review staff recommends the board take the following actions. Determine the notice of exemption prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate and complete, and waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue to the July 22 hearing for adoption. Any questions?
Great, thank you for the presentation. Any questions for my colleagues?
I actually have one, just educational. Why are ADUs not allowed because of SB 1123? If you can give me just a short summary of why?
Yes, so under SB 1123, local jurisdictions have the authority to decide whether or not to allow ADUs in addition to the 10 units that would be on one original lot that's split through this bill. So could I? So this shows the comparison of the two different developments. So this is one single lot, split under SB 1123, and this is what is allowed by right currently under state law. And this is the surrounding single-family neighborhood. As you can see, a couple of them do have ADUs on their lots, but this already has 10 units on what was one lot. And so we are asking, we are recommending that the board not allow ADUs as it would create a very dense neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments from colleagues?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk. Anyone sign up to speak on this matter?
We do, we have one person signed up, Chris.
If I may, Dave DeFanti, Deputy County Executive. Chris Norm from the North State BIA was here to speak in support, but he had to leave.
Oh, sorry.
Very good, then we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please do roll call vote.
Yes, Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez, Hume, Serna?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And I'm sorry, for the record, who made the motion in the second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, for item 55, this is the Gay Road Rezone and Tentative Parcel Map, a rezone tentative parcel map, special development permit, and a design review for an unaddressed property located off of Gay Road. This is in the Consumnis Community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you, I'm LeAnn Mueller with Planning and Environmental Review, and I'm here to present on this project.
LeAnn, would you like me to bring your podium down?
No, but I would like the presentation up.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the project site. It's located on the south side of Gay Road in the Wilton area in the Consumnis Community. It's currently vacant, and it's slightly under 20 acres. This is the general plan designation in the southeast plan area, Ag Res and AR5. County zoning, it is currently zoned AG80, but the surrounding area is zoned A5, which allows for five acres, and there are some areas also which have two acres. So the entitlement request is a rezone before the Board of Supervisors to rezone the property from Ag 80 to Ag Residential 5. It's a tentative parcel map so that that one parcel can be divided into four parcels. It will be approximately five acres each. It's a special development permit because one of the parcels will be slightly less than that five acres. It's Lot 3, and it is a design review to determine consistency with the countywide design guidelines. So this is the rezone exhibit, and again, you can see that the proposed rezone is consistent with the surrounding area. Tentative parcel map, four lots, approximately five acres each. Two are going to have frontage on Gay. The other two are going to be served by a private drive. Mitigated negative declaration is prepared, and there will be an MMRP. The one thing of note would be that because it's going from Ag 80, they will have to pay for Swanson-Hawke mitigation. Again, rezone, land division, SEQA document, no significant environmental concerns. It did go to four of the county's recommending bodies. They all heard it, and they are recommending that the board approve the actions that are before you. So staff recommendation is that you determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to SEQA is adequate and complete, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration. Approve the rezone of that property from Ag 80 to AR5. Approve the tentative parcel map, which will allow them to split it into four parcels of approximately five acres each. Approve the special development permit for Lot 3, which will allow it to be slightly less than five acres. Find it in compliance with the countywide design guidelines and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. This concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have regarding this project.
Thank you, LeAnn. Any questions for our staff? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to address this matter?
We do not for item 55.
Okay, in that case, that would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move the item, and just say that I think it was about two years ago that I met with the applicant on this and several other parcels in the area that have this remnant zoning, and so I'm glad to see him finally coming through. Although getting the process through the county is probably the easy work, writing the check for the Swanson-Hawke fees is going to be the heavy lift.
I'll second.
All right, very good. We have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez, Hume, Serna?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present. For item 56, this is the El Rio Substation, a board review request for a general plan and zoning code consistency determination for the construction of a new 230-155-69 KV substation located south of Elverta Road. This is near its intersection with El Rio Avenue in the Rio Linda-Elverta community. And the environmental document is a final initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the El Rio Substation project.
Thank you, LeAnn Mueller, also here to present on this project. And so this project is an expansion of an existing SMUD substation. It is located at Elverta Road, near the intersection with El Rio Boulevard. The area has a mix of uses in it, including agricultural, residential, industrial, and our interim agricultural reserve. I would also note that to the west, there is an existing WAPA substation. So this Elverta substation was established in 1954, and it is nearing the end of its service life. That expansion is going to be on an AR parcel, and they will be demolishing the existing home and the associated livestock operation. So this item before the board is a board review for consistency with the general plan, community plan, and zoning code. You aren't making any determination on the substation, just that it is consistent with our documents. So SMUD is the SEQA lead agency. They have already prepared an initial study. It was adopted by their board. This is the site plan. It gives you a look at what that is going to look like. Landscape plan, staff did work with SMUD to have enhanced landscaping along that Elverta Road frontage. And staff would recommend that you recognize that SMUD as the lead agency under Section 21067 of SEQA, and that you adopt the attached resolution of the Board of Supervisors determining that the El Rio Substation is consistent with the general plan, community plan, and zoning code. I can answer any questions you may have, and SMUD representatives are also here if you have any questions of them.
Very good, thank you, LeAnn. Any questions from my colleagues? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak on the matter?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Okay, very good.
I will go ahead and move the recommended action.
Very good, it's been moved. Is there a second? Chair will second. So we have a motion, a second. If there's no further questions, roll call vote, please.
Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez, Hume, Serna?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you, next item, please.
Yes, moving on to item 57. This is to approve the 2024 annual reports for the Antelope, Arden Arcade, Carmichael, Florin Road, Fulton Avenue, and Watt Avenue Property and Business Improvement Districts and provide for the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2526.
Okay, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair Serna, members of the board. My name is Vanessa Lieberman. I'm your manager of special districts in the Department of Community Development. Thank you for raising, yeah, that's perfect, thank you. The item before you today is a request for approval of the annual reports for our six Property and Business Improvement Districts, as well as the approval of resolutions to levy taxes for this fiscal year. This year, with the direction and leadership of Tracy Shaw and her amazing team at Community Strong Strategies, who's here with us today, we are piloting a more uniformed approach to our P-Bid presentations. Each P-Bid executive director will speak on behalf of their district, and we will be doing so in alphabetical order. But first, I will kick this off and eventually update my LinkedIn profile because that's where that picture's from. A little outdated. For our districts, we are a combined size of over 337 million square feet with combined budget of 3.1 million. For budget allocations, our districts spend on average of 70% of their budgets on clean and safe. And just this last year alone, they produced over 225 tons of trash and had over 13,000 dispatch calls for service. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce, from 80 watt P-Bid, Mr. Spencer Eberly, who's our board chair and will be stepping in on behalf of our executive director, Jason Wendt.
Good afternoon, thank you. Unfortunately, our executive director, Jason, was unable to attend today. He asked me to read this brief message for you. Good afternoon, supervisors. While I regret that I cannot be there in person to share my energy and volume to the chamber's proceedings, I wish to thank each and every one of you for your support, especially Supervisor Rich Desmond of District 3, which our P-Bid resides. Without your support, we would have not made the progress that we experience. From the RT station to the complete streets to the safe stay, we are making progress. I wish also to thank all of our law enforcement and first responders who do such great work. The various task force operations that have been conducted to help rescue trafficked individuals has made a real difference. Supervisor Rodriguez, I was honored to see you at the Drive for Impact Celebrity Golf Tournament, which raises money in the fight against trafficking. We have come a long way, and we have a long way to go. We will continue to fight, and we will do it together. Again, thank you all. P.S., I'm sure you received your gifts the next time we see each other. Have a great day. All right, so. I will be brief. So our district, which is in District 3, bounded by Cap City Freeway and Roseville Road. As you can see, most of our budget is allocated to security and maintenance, 75%, which we made a change in 2023. It continues to be the priority of the board and the district to make sure that it is a clean and safe place for people to come. Most of the properties in our district are made up of light industry, mixed warehousing, and other uses. However, a great deal of them are front customer-facing on Watt Avenue. In fact, the majority of them are, which brings a great deal of commerce and visualization to our area. Our Board of Supervisors, of which one of them is Mr. Desmond's chief of staff, which we very much appreciate her guidance and wisdom, as always. In terms of safety, as you can see, we have a very high volume of officer observations and dispatch service calls, as well as a great deal of cleanup that we do for the district. I think it's important to know that, working with our law enforcement partners, we continue to focus on augmenting safety and quality of life issues, and hopefully, at some point, we will be able to concentrate on other factors. But at this time, that remains our priority. Some of the challenges and opportunities that we have is that, while our district continues to challenge, be challenged by unfavorable reputation, we see many future opportunities that have been mentioned. The upgrading of the 80 watt RT station, the completion of the complete streets, which has been, as you know, a long time coming, and finally, the safe stay, which has an opening date, possibly later this year in our district. Some of the successes we've seen is that in the last year or two, we have seen a huge increase of grants and outside funding to augment our county budget. And we are very pride of our non-assessed. proud of our non-assessed benefits and in-kind donations. Lastly, for next year, one of the most important things that we are looking forward to is the completion of the complete streets. We feel this is an opportunity for rebranding and a remarketing of our area. It is moving at an extremely fast pace that I don't think we've all expected, and it is rather beautiful. I am very impressed of how it looks so far. And lastly, the Safe Stay. We have been receiving it with open arms. We hope in its success, and it is needed in our area. It is something that we feel passionately about, that the people that are there need those services. And if this can be an example of a place that things can get done, then I think that it will be a very positive thing to our district. So in conclusion, I would like to again thank Supervisor Desmond and his staff for his continued advocacy and support for our district. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have to say, I'm a little disappointed Jason isn't here, because we were kind of hitting this afternoon lull, and I was hoping he'd be here to kind of pick us up, pick the energy up here, but that's okay.
He brings a lot of energy.
And it occurs to me with those photos, there's only one person I know who takes more selfies than Jason Wendt.
He has that talent down, that's for sure.
But I just thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your thoughts and sentiments about the Safe Stay community. I mean, it's not just me, but I think my colleagues, we are all committed to making sure that's a success, not only for the people who we're going to help at that facility, but for the surrounding community. And we will continue to partner with 80 Watt to make sure we mitigate issues that come up, and it becomes a net positive for that surrounding community. So appreciate your support, appreciate your continued partnership and openness to this. Thank you.
Yours as well, sir. Thank you. Have a good one.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Okay, next up, we have Executive Director from Antelope P-Bid, Mr. Chris Evans.
Good afternoon. How are you? I'm glad I'm not following Jason as well, by the way. First of all, I want to start off by saying, as we always do, thank you so much for the services you all provide to us. You know, the P-Bids rely on the supervisors on an ongoing basis, and I know that lots of times throughout the year, we have issues come up. We don't always even agree on the issues, but the one thing we always know about the five of you up here is that you're doing it with the best intentions for the community. And I appreciate the time you put into it, and I appreciate the effort you put into it as well. I also wanted to note this year that for... This year, we have Tracy helping us, and she's done a wonderful job. Her whole group and her whole team has done a great job. But for the last six years, I've received consistent help every single year from Michael Middleton. And I just wanted to let you know today that for six years now, Michael has been an unbelievable help to me as we've done these annual reports, and I appreciate his support. And this year's been great. The report's been great, but I just wanted to call out Michael personally and say thank you for that. The district footprint is very, very simple. We have a budget of about $385,000 a year. The footprint remains the same year after year after year. We renewed last year, and the expansion was basically one additional property, which included the library system, so that we would have a meeting place. We only have three categories in the district. We have vacant, apartment complexes, and commercial. So it's really, really simple and very easy. We're a bedroom community. Our main focus is safety. When this district was formed, when the original Board of Directors got together and started forming this, it was all about safety. So and that's why the board that we have now, which is continuing on, which is Steve is our current chair, and he's going to talk here in just a minute, and then we have Rochelle Espinoza from WinCo, which is... She's in charge of loss prevention, and she's helping us. And of course, Sam Wingard, who's now with Rome Properties. He's our treasurer. The service impacts of this district, and this is the one I'm really proud of, 1,840 calls for service within our district. That represents about 20 minutes per call, which means about 613 hours of time that our security team spent handling issues that sworn officers didn't try to handle. And that's one of the things I'm very, very proud of, is our security team is constantly working in the district to handle the problems that sworn officers shouldn't have to handle. You know, when Bob is asleep in front of a liquor store, we've got this problem or that problem, it just doesn't make sense to have a sworn deputy come out and do that. So our team really steps up, and they work to make sure that every year, we're doing that. This last year, we saved four lives with Narcan, just as recently as about four days ago, was the most recent time where we were rolling up on people and finding them passed out and getting them the medical attention they need to save their life. So that's very rewarding. And then cleanliness-wise, you all know, as far as the clean team, we were very privileged for many years to have the clean team program down in the River District, and that Board of Directors supported the program. And in January, because of all the budget cuts and things had to change, so I've been very, very fortunate that the Antelope P-Bid Board of Directors has continued the clean team program. And now the Florin P-Bid has also got the clean team program. So we actually have people that were hiring out of the shelters, who are now doing maintenance within the districts and restoring themselves to full-time employment. I've been able to take that program that we originally had in the River District and keep it going in Antelope and in Florin, and we're going to talk to a couple of the other P-Bids and see if we might start being able to put the program into their maintenance as well. And one last thing I'll say about that before I'm going to let Steve come up here and tell you all the wonderful things we've got coming up in the district. But the other thing I'm very, very proud of is, you know, the city of Sacramento, due to budget cuts, had to cut the streets team program. Now, the streets team was where individuals who are homeless could go out and work, and they'd volunteer, and then they'd receive gift cards in exchange for that work. And unfortunately, the city couldn't keep funding that because of the budget cuts. Well, we're very lucky that in Antelope and in Florin, we're going to continue that program through the clean team program, and we're going to continue taking people who are on the streets and looking for a way back to recover, we're going to provide them with that opportunity. And that's one of the things I'm most excited about, is we're able to take this particular program and expand it, so instead of doing maintenance in the districts, we're restoring lives as well. And that's what really excites me and what I'm looking forward to in the future. This district was originally formed by Jeremy Krug, who was our original chairman. He spent about four years putting it together and then three years serving as chairman. And then he was followed up immediately by Steve from Les Schwab Tires, who's been an unbelievable help. Every single day, I'm bugging him about something different, and he's answering a problem or solving a problem for me. And so it's my pleasure now to introduce to you Steve Ampstutz, and he's our chairman of the board.
Thank you for making me sound good. Thank you. Number one, you guys are amazing at what you do for us. I've been in Antelope for 22 years. I moved there to open my store, and I watched all the years, me calling the sheriff all the time, because we had a huge problem, because we had this big creek behind us and the homeless camping out and everything. And Jeremy came to me and Percy, who owns the McDonald's, and the three of us were kind of the ones that got this started going all those years ago. And initially, like he said, it was all about security. And I can't imagine Antelope business community without having our P-Bid anymore. It just... The difference that our security team does and how great they work with our Sheriff's Department, and we can call them, and they're at our store immediately if we have a problem or whatever. But the biggest thing that changed now, since we renewed and everything, is our maintenance teams. Our community is clean, and our community looks great. And it's the three guys, two or three guys, depending on the time of the year, that we have in our maintenance team, all being former homeless guys, and the pride those guys take in what they do in our community, they are Antelope residents, basically. Even though they only work in our community right now, they are phenomenal, and they take such pride. And it's so much a joy for me watching these guys, and they come in, and they're so respectful. And they just want to be proud members of our communities that produce great work. And that's what they do, and that's what we're being able to give them, and that's why I encourage the other P-Bids to jump on board and do this, because the maintenance deal and getting these people off the street, it's a win-win for everybody. And so I appreciate you guys giving us the money to help this. I mean, granted, we're paying our tax on it, but it's still... It's wonderful and encouraged to help get the maintenance going more, because that is the biggest reward out of it. Yeah, the security has to be there, but the maintenance has been the neatest reward is seeing these people succeed. So thank you very much.
Yeah, once again, supervisors, we just want to close by saying thank you very much for what you do. We appreciate you, and we look forward to the next year. We look forward to some really exciting things in Antelope.
I just have some comments. Now I know who Jason is. And yes, Supervisor Desmond? Yes, he has me beat.
We're definitely more equipped by it.
It's an art. Three seconds. Chris, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do in Antelope. I got to learn of Antelope in the middle of 2023 and got to really... To visit and study and learn of some of the challenges that the town experiences, but you guys do really truly remarkable work in... You're right, in the safety. I think we have to, in this next year, work on the illegal firework issues that happen, but you guys just do phenomenal job, and I just want to thank you for that. Did you say you're with Les Schwab?
Yes.
Okay, so Les Schwab, let me tell you. You know, I had one of those encounters. I can't remember the gentleman's name, but my car's sensor light went on. I drove in, and they had my tires checked and fixed, and then I said, okay, what's the charge? And they were like, no charge. So I just got to say, I really appreciated that, and to do that in a community and not know, you know, not know who they were, who I was, but it was a pleasure to encounter. And I would want to do business with Les Schwab just because of that. It was exceptional customer service.
I will tell you a quickie little thing. Les Schwab told us always years ago, treat everyone like it's your grandparents, because everyone loves their grandparents, not everyone loves their parents. And so Les had so many great things that he used to tell us, and that was one of them, and that's one of the big reasons why we do those kinds of things for people, because that's what you would do for your grandparents.
And you know what I did? I took a selfie with that salesman and posted it and tagged Les Schwab, so...
There you go. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions?
Really do.
All right, we'll move on, please.
We have Executive Director from Arden Arcade P-Bid, Mr. Dion Dyer.
And I'm going to take full credit for Mr. Middleton, too, on that praise, so thank you, Chris.
Well, that's a lot to follow. All right. I would like to add Robert Height in the selfie competition for the Metro Chamber, too. Anyways, okay. Good afternoon, Chair Serna via video, fellow Board Supervisors. My name is Dion Dwyer. I'm representing the Arden-How Business Alliance today. And at first, I'd like to run you through our district footprint. We start the county line, Arden, and Hurley, running two miles down east to Arden Way to Watt, and then roughly one mile south down Howe and Hurley. This area encompasses about 13.5 million square feet with a total budget of $533,000. 80% is dedicated to clean and safe, a constant theme around here, but that's really the public-private partnership that I think the P-Bids provide. We represent 163 property owners who lease to 429 businesses. We are a commercial-centric district with nearly three-quarters of the district's commercial property. We have a very active Board of Directors that was led last year by Chris Brokini in 2024, and Kevin Fatt will be our Board Chair for 2025. As mentioned, 80% of our budget is focused on clean and safe services. A few highlights, our security team, we utilize Sacramento Protective Services, is very active in district with an average of 645 interactions a month, and of those, 32 have been elevated to high-level incidences. On the clean side of the house, our dedicated team from Accurate Cleaning has removed over 22 tons of debris from the district, along with 217 large graffiti items mitigated and 86 illegal dumps removed. In 2024, we leaned into issues in the district that continue to cause harm for our groups. We helped to bring together an organized retail theft group comprised of national brand businesses and assisted in sting operations with help from the Sheriff's Department that led to several successful prosecutions from the district attorney's office. To assist in these efforts, we also started a multi-agency communication network comprised of Arden Mall Security, Sacramento Police Department, Callexbo Police Department, the Sacramento Sheriff's Department, and the district attorney's office. One of the unique pieces of our P-Bid is right on many jurisdictional boundaries, and so we're trying to increase the communication within those groups. Some of our successes in 2024 was the support of the passage of Prop 36 and the reduction of retail theft over the course of the year. In December, we saw a notable decline in retail theft after hosting a press conference with Supervisor Desmond, DA Ten Ho, and Sheriff Jim Cooper. This effort also led to expanding our security network to include the Greater Arden Chamber of Commerce and the Sacramento Chamber of Commerce in assisting and arming our businesses and local businesses with proper tools for combating retail theft. As we move into 2025, we're focused on expanding our outreach efforts, continuing our branding as new district, this is a very key aspect for us, and supporting Arden Arcade events to bring people into the district to strengthen the safety and maintenance efforts through our existing partnerships. With that, I would like to thank a few people, county staff, definitely Troy and his team with Community Development, Crystal and her team with Economic Development, and of course, Supervisor Desmond and his staff, of whom Vanessa does sit on our board and is a great resource for our group. Last but not least, I'd be remiss if I did not call out our sheriff command, Captain Grillstone. He is a strong voice for law and order. If you know him, you know what I'm talking about. And our district attorney's office, Ron Lithicum, he's been a linchpin in our efforts to help turn the tide of public safety in our area. So with that, I'd like to thank you for your time today, and thank Supervisor Desmond for his support of this district.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the colleagues?
Mr. Chair, I'll just give some obligatory comments here for another P-Bid in my district. Thank you, Dion, for all your work. And the same comments, or similar comments to what I made to 80 Watt, is the Arden P-Bid, also the newest in Sacramento County, you're doing a great job, so much potential, but also on the edge, just some big social services projects in the county, permanent supportive housing projects, behavioral health-related projects. And I know at times that can be a concern for some of your members, but the same commitment goes to you and your members, that the county will remain a good partner with you to address issues that come up, and we appreciate your support for these projects, too, because they do so much to improve the community. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have our newest Executive Director with Carmichael P-Bid, Ms. Samantha Beck.
Thank you so much for having me. Really excited to share all that we were able to accomplish in Carmichael through the past year and what we have coming up. If we have not yet met, my name's Samantha Beck, and I just started as the Executive Director in December. So I'm going to start with some district highlights. And as you can see, our footprint is huge. We have over 266 million square feet, and with a total budget of just over 561,000, that means every single dollar is working very hard. The majority of our budget, about 61%, is focused on clean and safe efforts, which really underscore our ongoing commitment to safety and maintenance. It's our belief that if clean and safe comes first, the rest will fall into place. So from there, we invest in streetscape, economic enhancements, advocacy, and of course, our contingency as we focus on our renewal in 2031. Our district serves about 1,000 businesses and 363 property owners, covering a diverse mix of property types. As you can see, retail is by far our largest sector at over 50%, and that really shows the character and energy of Carmichael. The strong retail presence reflects a community of residents who love to shop and play and live, or, excuse me, and invest in where they live. They're really investing directly into the neighborhood's economy and are small business owners. And beyond retail, we have a strong office and industrial representation, which shows that Carmichael is not just living and shopping there, but they also work there. So they're truly investing in every part of local life. I also want to take a minute to recognize our board. So we have a fantastic group of leaders that volunteer and put their time and dedication and expertise into what we do. As you might know, the CID was... Has been off and on board and volunteer-run since its formation, so every single name on this list has been a key... Played a key role in our organization and in our success. So I just definitely want to thank them for their expertise. Our clean and safe work continues to be the cornerstone of all that we do. So on the safety side, our officers are through the Sacramento Protective Services, and they take a proactive approach and work closely with the Sac Sheriff's Department to achieve our shared goal of public safety. Their partnership and strong presence, which is from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. every single day and two night patrols, help deter crime and keep a safer environment for Carmichael. We've also started to include our community partners. So we've included Carmichael Heart, Community Health Works, and the library in our monthly meetings, so that way we're ensuring that we're addressing community deeds holistically. It's very heartwarming when you see someone who's been a security concern and in the security report almost every day, start to accept resources like rehabilitation and housing. And so we want to make sure that we're really celebrating those wins and that we're celebrating them together. And on the clean and maintenance side, we've removed over 126,000 pounds of trash, that's 63 tons. So much trash and so much graffiti and stickers and everything in between. You can see the numbers here, and our team is incredible at getting that done. And I want to thank Hillary Golden, Rich Esmeel for their And I want to thank Hillary Gold and Rich Esmeel for their consistent work and dedication to our district. So we've got some really great opportunities coming up. So we're going to keep focusing on business attraction and economic vitality. We're going to be building on our momentum that we've already completed with beautification projects and our safety improvements. But we're also going to be prioritizing strategic beautification and SEPTED improvement. SEPTED stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. We're really focusing on transforming our problem areas into safer spaces. These strategies, they're really, they're not just about aesthetics, they're truly about taking care of our business owners and our businesses and promoting investment, getting more people to be interested in developing into our district. So this past year, we've had some really great wins that we get to celebrate. So we maintain strong cleanliness and security throughout our whole district. We launched the smud utility box project, which doesn't just brighten up the district, but helps deter graffiti. We also completed significant SEPTED projects in lighting and landscaping totaling $21,000. And also on a personal note, I was honored to be appointed as ED this year, and I'm really grateful I get to serve. I grew up in Carmichael, and I get to serve there every single day, and it's really rewarding. So some goals we have for the upcoming year, of course, finishing our street banners and completing our smud box wraps. We are continuing to explore monument signage for Carmichael and continuing frontage landscaping. And as I said earlier, we're going to be deepening our SEPTED efforts, working on those improvements. And we're also working on expanding our engagement with brokers and property owners through events and business walks. So our next event is on August 26th. It's called Carmichael Connect, and it's in collaboration with the County Office of Economic Development. We're hosting this event to bring together developers, brokers, and property owners and the county all in one space, so we can show them all that Carmichael has to offer and see what we can do to get them to invest, get them to choose Carmichael. So that's our next event on August 26th. And again, all of these goals are about advancing and just boosting on the momentum that we already have. We want to make Carmichael more vibrant. We want to make it more sustainable and more safe for not just people who live there, but the people who choose to visit. So I definitely, I want to thank everybody, all the, each and every one of you. I especially want to thank our Supervisor Rich Desmond. You have been key in making sure that we're a success. You have been incredibly supportive to us, and we're very thankful for you. So thank you all.
Thank you. Any comments from colleagues?
Mr. Chair, I apologize. I have to thank Sam. Sam, thank you. We're so happy to have you in the district. I apologize that I live so close to the district, so you hear from me all the time. But I really appreciate you calling out Economic Development and the partnership and doing the business walks with property owners. I mean, I think that's, you know, something that we have really been striving for here is to really kind of find a way to crack that nut and get more investment, housing investment, commercial investment, business investment along these older commercial corridors. And really appreciate you calling that out, highlighting that, because, you know, the county will do everything we can to help you in that regard and attract these investors in these communities. And Ferlix Boulevard is a prime candidate for that.
It is. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Another presenter?
Yep. Next up is Corey Deru, our Executive Director from Florin Road P-Bid.
Got to make it short-size.
Oh, would you like me to put that down?
Oh, no, I got it. Thank you. I got it. Thank you. That's my glamour shot, everyone. There you go. Straight from the '90s. District highlights. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Corey Deru, and I'm the Executive Director of Thorn Road Partnership. You'll have to forgive me, I'm a little bit tired, as you all are, have been here since all afternoon. So I wanted to start with some of our district highlights. This, you'll have to forgive me, this is my first time with a slide on doing this. After nine years, I'm used to a video and other things. So as you can see, we have 25 million square feet, our total budget $590,000, as with most everyone else, 54% and more go into our clean and safe proposals. We have marketing capital improvements, advocacy and economic development administration, and then, of course, our contingency and reserve. You could see our district map here. We actually span both city and county with the largest white strip Highway 99. If you look just to the left, Franklin Boulevard, everything to the left of Franklin Boulevard is all city jurisdiction. So we actually have almost half city and half county. So it's a very unique beast. We have 341 parcels. I think this one's working better. We have 341 parcels. Hello? Okay. Our top property types, we have educational services, healthcare and social assistance, retail trade, and county and public administration. We have 215 properties and over 500 businesses. Last count, it was something about 525. Our Board of Directors, longtime Board President Barbara Ettrick, and of course, our county Supervisor, Patrick Kennedy's representative, Sochi Gomez, who does an amazing job on our Board of Directors. So we have 3,000 calls for service. What I want to say about this is that although we had 3,000 calls for service, our security provider, California Patrol Operations, actually performed an additional 5,400 patrol stops, where they just go and check on the businesses without needing to be called. So that's 8,000, 8,000 businesses and calls that we service. And in addition to our clean and safe numbers, we had over, we have over 58,000 pounds or 29,000 tons. But in fact, our maintenance successes with the work with Clean California, we had 121 additional cubic yards removed. And out of the Florin Light Rail Station, we had 226 cubic yards removed, just not including what you're seeing in the numbers here. These are additional to our stats. So that's one of our big bellies. That used to be a trash can. Our budget, I like to say that while the problems have increased, the budget hasn't quite followed it. So it really, we have needs for security. We have escalating labor and maintenance expenses. We have dumpster fees, equipment and replacement costs, trash cans. Right now, we're in the process of having to replace our entire fleet of trash cans in our district, which is a unit of 30. New trash cans cost, on average, $1,000. So it's a $30,000 investment to replace the trash cans within the district. Here we go. Our successes, I'm really happy about Winter Fest. We had, we had over 465 skaters. We had even four, we had little two-year-olds and on, out on the rink skating. We also had our first National Night Out. And we also had our mixed-in-pink Florin Road Breast Cancer Walk, which we did all along Florin Road with every banner marked down. So our goals for 2025, 2026, is to continue to light up Florin Road. We've already purchased these banners and these lights. It was a $100,000 investment, so we look forward to installing them for the first time this year. We are also expanding our Business Navigator program with our preparation for renewal in 2027. We have already outreach since January to over 250 businesses with a personal touch and personal reach and ask them what they need and how we can support them better. Beautification, we're going to be launching new banners, which are on our city side currently. We'll be putting those out. It's all youth-led art. So if you've seen the purple banners, Welcome to Florin Road, that's all art done by our local youth. So we'll be continuing that onto the county side now. Thank you. That's what I have to say for this. The slideshow's got me a little off, you guys, but I just really want to say that as we go forward, we're going to focus on long-term placemaking and economic development. We want to have a sense of neighborhood pride, art expansion, Winter Fest expansion, our Business Navigator program. And then, as Chris Evans has already mentioned, the job creation through the SACNAV Clean Team, which is now rolling on Florin Road. They have collected thus far more than any record we've ever had in the history of Florin Road Partnership. So we're looking at probably the month of July, we'll smash every record of maintenance successes. And so I'm really looking forward to the numbers coming out. We're working on job certification and programs for those folks in the SACNAV program. And finally, that's an aerial, but it's the freeway. And if you can imagine, Florin Road goes all the way down both sides of Highway 99. We wouldn't be where we are with the support of the Sacramento County and the Board of Supervisors. And so I just wanted to say thank you very much for that. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any comments? All right.
Okay, rounding out our presentations, will be Executive Director Melinda Michael from Fulton P-Bid.
Good afternoon, almost evening. Chairman Serna and members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for giving me the opportunity today to let you know what's going on in Fulton Avenue and how things have been going this past year. Our, sorry, I also am not used to this. Kind of used to freewheeling it, but that's not going to happen today. All righty, so our district footprint is really quite simple. We have a linear line of 2.8 miles, and that's all on Fulton Avenue between Arden Way and the Cap City Freeway. We do have some delineations in the major intersections within that distance. And that was something that was decided very early on in the formation of our district. Our district was formed in 1998 by a handful of very invested and committed property owners that had owned properties on Fulton Avenue for decades and had, they just began seeing this antiquation of not only the infrastructure, but the properties. And they'd had enough, so they came to the county and said, what do we do? And we've been, I think, one of the most, one of the more successful P-Bids in terms of what we've been able to accomplish since our inception. We renewed in 2023 for another five years. We had an 82% approval rating, and we were very excited about that. This is not a time for P-Bids to disappear. This is a, this is a time for P-Bids to emerge. And I think that certainly I've seen that over the last 22 years. When I started this position in 2003, there were three of us in the county and the city. And now I believe there are 19. So it's a really good thing to do. We have a very high percentage of auto-commercial property in our district. In 2011, when we put together in partnership with the county and SHRA and SPA, it was estimated we had approximately 105 acres of auto-commercial land within our district alone. Now, understanding that not all of that land is car dealerships, it is also car repair and car-related businesses. But Fulton Avenue, really, since its development in the '40s and the '50s, has remained an auto-centric destination. And we hold to that to this day. We have 132 property owners that I will call my family, and they would call me their family. We work very closely together and have for quite a long time to do what? To maintain our position in terms of revenue generation, to keep our longstanding businesses where they are, and to bring in new business, new diverse business. We've got a number of restaurants that are very popular, and they bring people in and out of the district every day, in addition to the 35,000, 40,000 commuters that we have that go east and west and north and south. We have a wonderful Board of Directors. Our leadership at the moment includes Mike Grace. Mike is retired General Manager of Fulton Hill Community Recreation and Park District and is currently the interim Chair of the Sacramento Parks Foundation. So he, he's our, he's our community green man. And then we have Dave Spencer, who does a lot of automotive internet sales and marketing. He is, his expertise has been very valuable. Tom Christman, owner of Jerry's Paint and Supply, very high-end car paint and body shop. And then Christine Cahill-Rehm, CEO of Charles C. Bell Incorporated. Charles C. Bell is our number-one property owner. Also, members of our board, very, very helpful with their ideas and their support with anything that is needed to keep this organization healthy. Ms. Derek Nilo, Teresa Higgins, Felix Liu, Larry Fulker, center local real estate agent. Jim Par Dunn, used to work for the Department of Economic Development in Sacramento County. Assistance League. We have representation from our big business, our small business, and we appreciate everything that each brings to the table. Service, our clean and safe programs, along with our other partners and friends here, it encompasses the bulk of our budget. Our security budget is about 60%, and our clean budget is a little bit behind. And those two, our two contractors work very closely together. SPS Security is our security team. And District Maintenance Incorporated, Hillary Gold and his staff take care of our cleanup and our maintenance. Pamela and Miguel are our street walkers and picker-uppers. Every day, they do a fabulous job, and so does Hillary, managing them and everyone else that he has to deal with on a daily basis. Wow, well, there's no question that challenges that we've had are directly related to the unhoused and also just general criminal activity. I won't speak too much about retail theft. We have Town and Country Village, which has some mid-box businesses in it. But it's really our Walmart neighborhood market and the Five Below that get the most troublemakers. And there's a lot of, you know, to and fro between our security and those properties. We're trying to minimize the calls for service that come in from those properties because we've got 132 properties that need attention. Public and private trash, I can't tell you. We have a Department of Human Assistance in our, in our district. And at the end of the day, 5:30, that parking lot is full of trash. People that pull in there to avail themselves of the services avail the parking lot with their trash and take off. So that's something that we really don't deal with. We don't clean up private properties. We clean up the street and the common areas. But I think we could, we could work a little bit more closely with some of the property owners and tenants to clean up their own properties. Vandalism, we have an immense amount of vandalism that occurs. We know that a lot of it is related to the unhoused, not all of it. We're trying to keep a pulse on that. We have, I can't say enough, our organization, we, I would say that we're thriving. We struggle in many of the ways that other P-Bid struggle. But I would say we don't struggle in the sense that our property and business owners have any real beef with us. We are all working together to make things better. And they all understand that, with the exception of a handful of folks. They all understand that. And that makes life a little bit easier and a little bit better on Fulton Avenue. We have two signature events that I'll wrap up with. One is the Holiday Tree Lighting that we have the first Saturday in December. And this has been happening in our little local community of Arden Arcade for 17 years now. We started off in Tognati's parking lot. We now are in the Department of Human Assistance parking lot. We planted a sequoia five years ago now, and it's about 52 feet tall now. And we decorate that tree. We call it the Tree of Grace, and we light it up that first Saturday. It's a free event for the community. We have free food, music, entertainment, and it's a lovely revered event in Arden Arcade, especially there on Fulton Avenue. And then Cruz Fest. We're in our 14th year this year. Cruz Fest on Fulton Avenue. We have been in partnership with the California Auto Museum. That partnership was very successful, and they've decided to go their way, and we've gone ours. And so we will be holding our 14th Annual Cruz Fest on Saturday, September 13th, and the proceeds benefiting Shriners children and the Fulton Hill Camino Recreation and Park District programs for seniors and children. I'll make some models. Go to CruzFestOnFultonAvenue.com to register your car and come out. It's a free event for the, for the community, and it's something that we And it's something that we look forward to every year. Few short goals. We're just going to keep doing what we're doing. We are creating a 501(c)(3), and that will be something that greatly benefits us. And thank you Supervisor Desmond for helping us with that budget item. We appreciate that very much. We've got in-street monuments that need repair. We're working on that. Increasing our social media visibility, that's somewhat related to our events, too. Decrease the number of security calls, of course, ideally that we would like to do that. Develop an owner-members-Only platform. That is something we've never done because we're all pretty open with our communication. Thank you. Are there any questions for me or comments?
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from colleagues?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Melinda, representing the venerable Fulton Avenue Association. I'm sure it's the, is that, that's the first P-Bid formed in unincorporated Sacramento County, correct?
Correct.
I think it was really kind of the proof of concept to show that this new model can be just a tremendous success in these unincorporated communities. So I thank you for your, your experience there and what you've done. It's just been a tremendous asset. I was going to mention Cruz Fest and the Christmas tree lighting. Those are, those are great events for that Arden Arcade community. And I want to throw the gauntlet down to Dion because you need to develop some of your own events and the Arden P-Bid as well, Dion, to match some of these and what Melinda has done there.
Yeah, Dion.
But I know you, I know you also-
Bring it on, Dion.
You also have some, some challenges that you face, and you work with our office a lot. And I, I will commit to continue to work with you to address some of these things. Because I know it can be frustrating for you and your members. But thank you for taking care of the auto retailers who contribute so generously to the county coffers with that sales tax revenue that we need to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Thank you, Melinda.
Okay, thank you to the Executive Directors and the Board Chair for what? For the presentations today. So at this time, staff would like to recommend the approval of the annual reports and resolutions to authorize the levy of assessments for fiscal year 25, '26.
I'll go ahead and move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone from the public that has signed up to speak on this matter?
We do not have anyone for this item.
Okay, very good. Motion in a second, please do a roll call vote.
Supervisors Desmond Rodriguez-
Aye.
Hume-
Aye.
Serna-
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously with those members present.
Thanks again to all of our P-Bid Executive Directors and staff and institutions like Hillary. Wanted to make mention of that after the last presentation. Appreciate our long histories together in some instances and the new ones that have recently initiated all the great work you do to help us help the public enjoy a clean and safe environment along our corridors. Thank you.
Okay, for item 58, I'll read this item into the record. And then I'll also take the oath of the folks who have signed up to speak. Right now, we have about 18 public comments. So item 58 is the 5204 Marion Drive Wireless Communication Facility. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a use permit, special development permit, and design review for a property located at 5204 Marion Drive. This is in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration. So at this time, if you have signed up, I'd like to take your oath so that you can address the board. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm? Thank you. And when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record. And if you could say the statement, I have been sworn. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could I also respectfully offer to our speakers, we're certainly interested to hear what you have to share on, on this agenda item. I would, again, respectfully suggest that if your comment is likely consistent with or the same as others, it's okay not to use the full two minutes. And just be cognizant of that, if you would, please. That would help us get to our deliberations a little quicker. It's already been a long day. And I just want to make sure that you understand that we certainly want to have your testimony affect our consideration. But we are registering everything you say on the record, for the record. But if it is similar to a person next to you, it's okay to abbreviate. Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, Chair Serna and members of the Board. Kimber Gutierrez with Planning and Environmental Review. Before I begin, just want to give a quick shout out to Christian Balthazar, who's the project manager for this project and has worked really hard to get the project to this point. Also want to thank members of the public and the applicant for hanging on with us for the whole day. Okay, so the subject site is located at 5204 Marion Drive, which is approximately 249 feet east of the intersection of Fair Oaks Boulevard and Marion Drive. The site is also within the Carmichael community and is currently vacant. The subject site is zoned RD2, and surrounding uses include single-family residential, zoned RD2 to the north and east, multi-tenant retail, zoned LC to the west, and an apartment complex zoned RD20 to the south. The subject site has had one previous planning entitlement, which, similar to the proposed project today, is for, was for a wireless communication facility called William Pond Cellular Facility. The previous project proposed the construction of a 78-foot-tall monopole and was to be located on the southwestern portion of the lot. The project was presented to the Planning Commission in 1997, where it was ultimately denied. And that denial was appealed by the applicant to the Board of Supervisors, which held their hearing on February of 2001. And the Board did uphold the Planning Commission denial of the project and determined that the site was not suitable for a cellular communication facility. Besides that previous entitlement, staff has confirmed that there are no active code enforcement cases for the site. The entitlements being requested for this project include a use permit, special development permit, and design review. The use permit is to allow a new cell tower within the RD2 zoning district. The special development permit would be to allow deviations to the maximum height requirement and the separation requirement from Group 1 zone. And then lastly, design review to determine substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. On screen now is the site plan for the proposed project. The project is proposing a new 74-foot-tall wireless communication facility, a diesel generator, and an accompanying equipment cabinet, all within a 576-square-foot lease area near the southwest corner of the property. The lease area would be accessed via a new 20-foot-wide gravel driveway from Marion Drive, which is along the north of the project site. And then the drive will run along the western boundary. Here is an enlarged site plan. One of the requested deviations is for the separation from Group 1 zoned properties. In this case, that would include the residential properties. The proposal is meeting the separation requirements to the north, so keeping distance greater than what is required, which is 236 feet. They are also meeting this to the west, given that the lot to the west is zoned for commercial. There is no, that 236 foot is not required on that property line. Where they are deviating is the south property line. Excuse, excuse me. The south property line and the east property line. Thank you. Okay, to the south, they are proposing 25 feet separation and to the east, 69 feet separation. Here are the elevations for the proposed cell tower. They are proposing a monopine stealth design. And as previously mentioned, it would be 74 feet in height, which is a 19-foot deviation from the 50-foot-tall standard. And then also, this shows that the lease area will be secured by a six-foot-tall wooden fence. The next couple of slides cover some photo simulations that were taken from different viewpoints to the site. Top images will show the existing condition without the tower. And the bottom images will show what the area would look like with the tower at the proposed 74-foot-tall height. This photo simulation is looking south of the project site and provides an unobstructed view from Marion Drive, which the project fronts. This one is from the, looking southeast at the project site from the intersection of Marion Drive and Fair Oaks Boulevard. This is looking north at the project site from Arden Way, from the frontage of the apartment complex to the south. And lastly, this is a view from the intersection of Walnut Avenue and Fair Oaks Boulevard. There are five additional photo simulations that are included in the board packet as Attachment 7. The applicant also provided three different coverage maps. The first one here shown is the existing service in the project area with no tower. Areas in green show reliable coverage both indoors and outdoors. Yellow shows reliable coverage in transit, so meaning those who are driving through the area. And then the blue indicates reliable service only when outdoors and indicates less reliable coverage indoors. The applicant's goal would be to reduce the areas in the blue as much as possible. So the red circle indicates the coverage objective. And then here we have two additional coverage maps. The left is the 55-foot-tall tower, which is permitted. And then the 74-foot-tall tower, which is what is being proposed. These maps were provided by the applicant as part of their justification for their request to ask for a deviation from the maximum height requirement. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project and was released for public review on February 21st of this year. The document discussed the topics listed on the slide and concluded that the project would result in less-than-significant impact with the implementation of mitigation measures. To go over a couple advisory recommendations. So the Design Review Advisory Committee did meet on January 23rd of this year, and they do recommend that the project be found in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. And then the former Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council did meet on January 8th of this year. And they do recommend, they did recommend that the Planning Commission deny the requested entitlements. We did have seven members of the public speak in opposition to the proposed project. Concerns raised included health and safety in terms of RF exposure, sensitive groups residing in the surrounding area, over-concentration of cell towers in the area, potential decrease in property values, increased traffic, noise from the backup generator, and concerns that this site was not adequate for the proposed use. As part of their recommendation, the CPAC also voted to pre-authorize a community-wide interest appeal in the event that the project was approved by the Planning Commission. In response to the comments received at the CPAC, the applicant did provide a property valuation report, which looked at property values for property specifically within the Carmichael community. And that is included as Attachment 10 of your hearing packets. They also provided an alternative sites analysis, which is included as Attachment 9. Just kind of going over a brief overview of that analysis, there were a total of 10 sites, including the project sites, that were selected as candidate locations for either co-location on an existing tower or as new tower locations. Of the 10 sites, five sites were considered for co-location. And the reason that they weren't selected included owners not being interested in expanding the lease area and sites not suitable for the coverage needs that they were seeking. The other five sites were selected as candidates for new towers. However, four of those were not selected because the property owners were not interested. And then also, some of them were included, some of them included county park sites as well. So the project was heard by the Planning Commission on March 24th of this year. There was several discussion topics by the commissioners and several concerns shared, including over-concentration of cell towers in the area, as well as kind of what changed between the last denial of the project and the proposed project before them this year. Potential site constraints for future development, concerns with the removal of trees, as well as the noise impacts from the backup generator as well. We did have 12 members of the public provide verbal testimony at that hearing, largely in opposition, and cited public health risks associated with the proposed project and the negative effects as property values, as well as all of the concerns that I went over during the CPAC meeting as well. After the hearing, the, after deliberations, the Commission did vote to approve the project with a three yes, two no vote. And following that hearing, the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC did file an appeal with the Clerk of the Board's Office on April 1st. And the appeal form did provide a number of justifications, including better alternative locations were more suited than the proposed area, including the county park sites, deviation from the height limit of the proposed tower to 74 feet, saturation of cell towers in the area, and close proximity of the tower to the neighbors. And a copy of that justification statement and appeal form is included as Attachment 14. I'm going to go over the next couple of slides. We'll kind of touch on the various points made by the appellant's. So the first being the better alternative locations and kind of the proximity to residential development. So following the filing of the appeal by the CPAC, the applicant team did provide additional materials in response to the justification. So one of those is on the screen now. This is a map provided by the applicant depicting the boundaries of their alternative site analysis, which is the red line. And then Attachment 15 of your hearing package does contain the revised alternative site analysis that was prepared by the team as well. The revised site analysis contains an additional site, which is the sewage treatment plant adjacent to the American River, which I'll go over in a little bit more depth on the next slide. But there were justifications included for why all 10 candidate sites were not selected. The analysis also includes email communications for some of these sites, specifically with county parks. And this material was provided in response to the appeal justification. The next point is on the alternative location. So as previously mentioned, the applicant did add a new site to the alternative site analysis, which is the sewage treatment plant adjacent to the American River. That is this site over here on the bottom of the screen. This coverage map depicts the, an 135-foot tower at that additional site location. The applicant has indicated that, as shown on the coverage map, even at that height of 135 feet, the targeted gap that they are looking to close, so the, again, the red circle, the coverage objective, would not be met by doing the larger, taller tower at that wastewater treatment or sewage treatment plant location.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Kimber. I have all some comments and questions at the end. But since you're on this, I had a question about this. And I met with the applicant with Todd, and we discussed this very thing. But I'm just, I'm a little confused because I think in, I don't know what year it was. Was it 2020? Or there was a proposal at one point for a cell tower not too far from this location. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Supervisor Desmond, Todd Smith, Planning Director, you are correct. I can't remember the number of that site, but it was the one, I think, at Jed's Trail.
William Pond or something, it was at?
Just to the north, slightly northwest of this. I think the applicant might be able to answer in more detail if you have further questions on that one.
I'll wait till the applicant, but just, just a preview. I'm, I'm curious why that site was proposed several years ago as being a potentially viable site. But now it's not, even though this, this site at the sewage treatment plant, which is now the Sheriff's Academy, is not suitable. So I'd like, I would like to answer that question when the applicant comes up here.
Okay. All right. I'll go through these fairly quickly. But in, in response to the appeal as well, the applicant did provide some revised photo simulations that were showing the tower at 55 feet, which would no longer require the special development permit for that maximum height deviation. So these are the same viewpoints that we went over before, just with 55 feet. I also wanted to- I also wanted to note that at that planning commission hearing, the applicant did indicate that they would be willing to lower the height of the cell tower to 55 feet. However, the planning commission did move forward with the approval of the 74-foot height.
Kimber, excuse me, and Mr. Chair, if you don't, if you don't mind, I had a follow-up question about this as well. At the, at the 55-foot level, if they're not asking for a variance and it's at 55 feet, could an applicant, whether it's this applicant or another applicant, later on raise the height of the tower? Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, there are allowances to raise the height on a ministerial level, and I believe it is 20 feet, 20% or 20 feet you're allowed to go up on just a staff-level review. So they wouldn't be required to come back and receive discretionary entitlements to raise the height that much. If they go beyond that 20 feet, then they would be required to come back.
So in other words, if it were, if they agreed to locate it at 55 feet, they could later come back, add 20 feet without having to come back to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So following staff's review, it was determined that the project remains consistent with the general plan, Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Plan and Action Plan, as well as the zoning code. The environmental document did conclude that the project would, there would be no significant environmental concerns. And although the project was not supported by the CPAC, the proposed project would provide better emergency services, increasing network coverage in the area, and is designed as a monopine tree to blend in with the surrounding trees in the area as well. So the, and then lastly, the project was supported by the DRAC to be found consistent with the design guidelines. So based on that, staff is recommending that the board take the following actions: deny the appeal, upholding the planning commission's approval of the project; determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to CEQA is adequate and complete, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration; adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program; approve, approve the use permit, special development permit; and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, all subject to findings and conditions. And that concludes my presentation, and I believe the applicant is available. I believe the appellant had to leave.
Yeah, just real quick on that front. The appellant, the chair of the Carmichael CPAC, Mike Roenstein, had to leave earlier today, but he had identified a member of the public. He gave his notes to that person, so he, she is able to speak on behalf of the appellant.
Okay. Thank you, Kimber, and thank you, Todd. And again, I would just remind those that have already been sworn in anticipation of your testimony, the appropriate initiation of your comments is that you have been sworn. We need that for the record, please. And before we get to our speakers, do we have any further questions, comments for any of our staff?
Mr. Chair, this is Supervisor Desmond again, and I don't know, I guess the applicant is just available for, for questions? Is, were they going to?
Yeah, so typically after, in the case of an appeal hearing, we'll hear from staff, then the appellant, and then the applicant.
And then public comment. Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so then are we going to hear the, the appellant's substitute, for lack of a better term? Sorry, no disrespect.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, very good.
I want to adhere to the chairman who said, "Do not repeat." You did a very good job going over Mr. Rockenstein's appeal, so I'm just going to highlight. He was here for two and a half hours, waited. I think it was wonderful for him to come. And he said, "The CPAC, at the January 8th meeting, recommended denial five to one of the proposed use permit for the wireless communication facility. The reasons being: better alternative locations, more suited than the proposed area, including county areas; deviates from 55 feet as proposed to 74 feet; and there is a saturation of cell towers in the area." I imagine he is referring to Five Points. "And it's too close to the neighbors in the area." He also said that the equation for the setbacks should be the height times three, which would put that at 222 feet. I believe there's asking, they have 67 feet on one side and 25 feet on another side, which is quite a bit less than 225 feet, so. And we want to thank him for coming and speaking today, and I hope I did him justice on his appeal.
And thank you. And before you leave, you have been sworn, correct?
I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good, good evening, Chair Serna. Good evening, Vice Chair Rodriguez, Supervisors Desmond and Hume. My name is Nicholas Taggus with 51 Wireless, agent on behalf of AT&amp;T. As the agent on behalf of AT&amp;T, we do support staff's findings, the DRAC's findings, as well as the planning commission's findings. And I'm here to answer any questions, address any comments or concerns raised by the public, or any questions that supervisors have.
Okay, and you, and you have been sworn, correct?
I have been sworn, correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking for, from speakers at the beginning of your testimony. Again, respectfully, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. So, thank you. Mr. Taggus?
Taggus.
Taggus, okay. So you, you heard the question I asked, and I just, because we met in my office, and we had a discussion about this, and I told you I'd had a discussion with Sheriff Cooper about would he be amenable to potentially exploring a cellular tower on the Sheriff's Academy property, which, as you know, he leases from Sac Sewer. And it was my understanding that that location there is pretty close, in close proximity to the former William Pond proposal.
Correct.
Which at the time was going to improve coverage, but, but now you're saying it would not improve coverage at that location. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, so at that time, the coverage and goal objectives was for that specific area southwest of the current coverage objective area. And when that project was denied, AT&amp;T had asked our office to find a location just southwest of that location along Fair Oaks Boulevard, which we were able to successfully do. If you look just adjacent to Jesuit High School, there is the Fair Oaks Pet Clinic, and there is a second-story penthouse. You wouldn't even know there's a cell tower on top of that pet clinic. We were able to get that successfully approved and designed, so that fills the coverage gap and objective of all that residential area, including Jesuit, southwest of this current objective ring. And because of the economic development that is happening along Fair Oaks and Arden Way, specifically in this new area, this is a wholly new coverage objective area that we're trying to help AT&amp;T's customers fill. As you stated earlier, Fair Oaks Boulevard is a prime location for economic development, and that's exactly what this location is trying to cover. And again, being at its location just 249 feet from Fair Oaks and Arden Way, that's exactly what this is trying to accomplish. Now, going back to the two deviations, there was two of them that were requested for this project. The first one was a height deviation of 74 feet versus 55 at the planning commission. And again, today, I will affirm that AT&amp;T is willing to lower the height of their proposal to that 55 feet. As related to the second deviation of the setbacks, there's two parcels that this deviates from. The first one is to the south, which is an apartment complex. The owner of that property isn't here today, but he was at the planning commission, and he has affirmed his support for the project. The second property is 67 feet to the east. That is the property owner, Mr. Drew Bay, who's here tonight, who is leasing this portion of this other parcel to AT&amp;T. So the two property owners that are, would be, quote, "affected or impacted" by this deviation for setbacks are both in favor of this project. And the specific location of this tower was specifically located to be closest to the commercial corridor, furthest away from every other residential parcel in this neighborhood. And I believe in your packet, we added additional photo simulations that we had our engineer go around the entire horseshoe of Marion Drive and take pictures from all of the different areas to show that, once you drive past this for a matter of seconds, your front yard and backyard, you will not have any visual obstructions or use or enjoyment of your property by seeing this tower, because the trees in that area are so tall and the distance from their properties. How they did that was they put a drone up in the sky with a GPS location exactly where the tower would be, at the exact height that they were requesting, and they just walked around the properties and took photos. If you can see that drone, then you can see the tower. If you can't see that drone, you can't see that tower. And again, those photo simulations, those additional ones, were at 74 feet, not the 55. So with that, if there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, supervisor.
No, thank you. I appreciate the, the long response to my very limited question relating to the William Pond site.
Yes, you're welcome.
But, but just to get back to that, and I'll respond to a few other things, or comment on a few other things. There was still a service need at that location at William Pond. Has, is that, is there a service need? Is there no longer a service need in that area that would be met by coverage?
That's correct. That, that was, that was filled with that site.
The spot behind Jesuit High School.
Yes, sir.
Got it, okay. And then you brought up the willingness to reduce the height to 55. You heard my exchange with our, our planning director and Kimber about that very issue. What would prevent AT&amp;T from coming back and seeking approval on a ministerial basis to raise it back to the 20 feet to which they would be entitled?
So once AT&amp;T invests their, their infrastructure improvements here, the only reason if a future applicant would request increase that height is if they wanted to co-locate on it. One of the questions, or not questions, but concerns, was a, quote, "saturation of cell towers in the area." There's only one other cell tower, and that's at Five Points Plaza. AT&amp;T attempted to get on that tower. However, there's already three carriers on that dish, Verizon and T-Mobile, and there's no amount of space on that tower on the ground existing that would have allowed AT&amp;T on there. So to answer your question, one of those carriers would want to leave that location and co-locate on AT&amp;T's tower in order to then request that 6409A eligible facilities request to do that. Otherwise, it would just be a single carrier tower unless some of those other carriers across the street would like to co-locate on this tower.
So just want to be clear, though, if, if someone wants to co-locate on an AT&amp;T tower, and AT&amp;T can earn more revenue by co-locating, wouldn't they be amenable to that?
AT&amp;T by, by law and by the code is supposed to allow for co-locations, whether they get a financial response from that or not. Your code specifically says that towers must be designed to be co-locatable.
So then what that says to me is if someone wants to co-locate, and it means AT&amp;T raises this 20 feet to which they'd be entitled, I could see that happening, regardless of whether you agree to 55 feet today. That's kind of how I, I see that playing out.
Of course, yes, yes. And again, they're, they're following the rules and regulations of the strict ordinance for co-locations.
The other thing, this, this board, and maybe this is more for Todd and Kimber, there was a proposal for a tower at this very location. What year was that? And both the planning commission and this board denied that application. Is that correct? So what has changed in their intervening time?
So in 1997, I believe it was Sprint at that time. They might have had a different subsidiary name. They were attempting to, to design a monopole, so not a tree, just a standard metal steel structure. And at that time, there was different technologies, different abilities, or the lack thereof, to design something that blends in with the natural topography and vegetation of the area. And when they were denied, they moved across the street, I believe in 2002 or 2004, in that shopping center. So what's changed since then is, one, the economic development of the area; two, the amount of folks that have moved into the area; three, the amount of emergency 911 calls, the amount of safety calls annually, just in Carmichael alone. And then now, with AT&amp;T, they have proven their significant gap in coverage and capacity. That's what's changed in terms of them trying to fill that gap for the, the customers of AT&amp;T in Carmichael.
Okay. I want to respond to that, but first, with respect to the monopole, and you talked about, you know, hiding it. I mean, even just looking at your photos, you say that people can't see it. Well, I can just, I can see it from the photos that you've provided, and it's not fooling anybody. I mean, we know what that is. It doesn't look like, you know, a native redwood tree or something in the neighborhood, which I suppose they're not native. But with, I'm glad you brought up the 911 thing, because I was a first responder for 24 years, and I worked in the area. I was born and raised in Carmichael, and very familiar with kind of some of the quirks of cell coverage in that community. You know, I've never heard from Sheriff, CHP, Metro Fire that it is a real issue there, coverage. Do you have any testimony to the contrary, or any, any documentation to the contrary that they're, that they're in support of this because they have gaps in coverage?
So what we have is just the actual list of dropped calls in the area for AT&amp;T's customers. I can't speak to how many first responders are AT&amp;T customers. I don't have that data. All we can say is there is a clear, defined gap in coverage and capacity for AT&amp;T's customers in this area. That includes first responders, if they do have AT&amp;T as their coverage provider. That includes the small businesses in that area, as well as the residents who live nearby. AT&amp;T is not in the business of building towers that are on top of their existing towers where they're already providing coverage. And in order to maintain their competitive advantage with their competitors, as well as provide competition and lower prices for the residents, they're looking to expand their coverage and capacity in this specifically defined targeted area. And yes, when you come off of Fair Oaks and Arden Way, you will see this tower as you are on that commercial corridor. But again, once you get into the heart of the neighborhood, you will not be seeing this tower, and it's, it's shown by those photo simulations.
And one last thing, Mr. Chair, and I'll, you know, mention the, you mentioned the, I guess, the owner of the apartment complex right there.
Yes, sir.
I also see a letter that we all received, signed by several tenants of that apartment complex, that are against this, and they'd be looking directly at that tower if they're on the, I think, on the north side of that apartment complex. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, in closing, this, this is really just about economic development. It's about equal access to reliable cellular service and just the ability for AT&amp;T to not only compete with the other competitors in this area, but to demonstrate, not only after five years of trying to find a location, but meeting the strict guidelines of this code and providing these services that are going to not only help the citizens, visitors, and first responders.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Okay, let me pull up that list. Okay, Paul, Paul D. Yes.
I'll try and be brief. My name's Paul Drew Bay. I've been sworn in, and, oh, thank you. My family's had this property for 75 years. This was my grandparents' home, and they raised their family in a menagerie of animals, and I have the privilege of doing the same. My family lives there, and as we talked about, a previous tower was proposed. As far as the setback, that, I might have had a hand in that. I wanted this pushed as far back as possible, so you might see that deviation. To quote one of my neighbors, "AT&amp;T coverage in our area sucks." I was an AT&amp;T customer when I moved there. I switched to Verizon. There is definitely just a hole. You know, we talked about, well, what's changed since 1997? My grandparents, a lot of my neighbors, had landlines as a backup. Now, we all have cell phones. A lot of us don't have landlines. In an emergency, if we had a fire or flood on, say, the American River Parkway that we're close to and we lost power, not only would you not have AT&amp;T coverage, you wouldn't have Verizon, T-Mobile, or I believe Dish, because there's no backup power at Five Points Plaza. So, you know, just to illuminate, like, not only is this an issue from my standpoint that AT&amp;T is not adequately serviced, there's no backup power, this is aging infrastructure. So as, to speak to, why would somebody want to co-locate? Well, they don't have backup power at Five Well, they don't have backup power at Five Points Plaza. Something that I want to point out is just when I, when we met in your office, Supervisor Desmond, you said, "It's really important to me to put these located further from single-family homes." We talked about two locations. One was at Five Points Plaza. Why couldn't another tower go there? Why couldn't one go on top of Rayleigh's? Well, this tower location is, the nearest home is 400 feet, over 400 feet away, from another single-family residence other than my own. And then those two other locations have eight homes and 11 homes respectively within that area. So that's what I wanted to add. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Hey, our next speaker is Jerry Campos.
My name is Jerry Campos, and I've been a resident in Marion Drive since 1992. The reason I moved here was because of family issues. In 1989, my son contracted cancer. He had gone through two surgeries and radiation, and we were looking at a third surgery. In discussion with the neurosurgeons and the radiation oncologist, I asked him as many questions as possible for the survival of my son. Mainly, what can I do to keep my son healthy? Besides diet and things of that nature, we talked about having radiation and rays. And he said, "The less rays that you will have, the less likely there'll be a return of cancer." It was a medulla bastoma, the brain cancer. So I immediately looked for areas in the area that might be the best suitable for the survival of our oldest son, who was four at the time. I found a home for sale on Marion Drive. We bought it. It needed a lot of work. It stretched us financially that we did it, because we wanted the survival of our child above everything. We even put extra funds to put all of the wires that we had on the property to go underground to limit those rays. Thank God he is healthy today, and I, and I think it's because of all of the things that we did to keep that area like it was in 1992. It was tranquil, serene, quiet, and not with a lot of the normal neighborhood noises and things of that nature. I hope that the board, which is, you've taken a lot of your time, I hope that you concur with the CPAC, what they voted on, and what they voted back in 1987, or whatever year that was, and with the overwhelming majority of the residents of Marion Drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have been sworn.
Thank you. Mary Ann Campos.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Campos. I'm married to that guy, and we have lived on that street for 32 years. And back in 1997, I stood right here, and I spot the cell tower then, and I'm standing here again to fight the cell tower. We don't need a cell tower in a residential neighborhood. I take great offense that AT&amp;T did not show one of our homes. They only showed a vacant lot. We live on that street. Our children are on that street. We have grandchildren that visit. I don't understand why they want to encroach on residential property. The county turned them down. Everybody's turned them down. Rayleigh said no. It's not that that wasn't feasible. They've been told, no, 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 no. I want to be able to say, no, 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 no. Their setbacks are really, 60% less than what antiquated regulations told them in 1997. Nothing's been changed since 1997, and they're asking for lesser setbacks? And those are antiquated, antiquated guidelines. I don't understand that, how that could even be possible. And to ask for a tower to be 55, and then, "Thank you, Mr. Desmond, for letting us know that they could come back, put that tower up 74, co-locate four people, and we would never, ever know." That is unacceptable. We live on a quiet, serene street. We have no streetlights. We have no sidewalks, and we have beautiful, mature trees. I take offense that they're going to take down 14 trees. So a picture they showed you doesn't account for the 14 trees that they're taking down. So I want to see that picture as well, and I want to see my house and tell them how close it is to me. And I just want to say that I totally agree with the CPAC. They said, "Why? This is not a suitable area." We agree, it's not suitable. We live there. And then they said, "There's too many." Yeah, we didn't even know there was one, two blocks down. And why? Why Marion Drive? I don't see a lot of people growing and moving around, and a lot of, that AT&amp;T doesn't have self-coverage. I guess Verizon might. So why are we doing this now, after we were told, no, 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 and the CPAC said no? I thank you for your time. I would order pizza if I could.
Thank you.
Okay, John.
John.
It's okay. He's cutting.
My name is Joan Hammond. I have lived on Marion Drive longer than anyone else, over 50-some years. And I am against this tower. I was against it 20 years ago, and I love our street the way it is. I love the people on our street, and I want to give any remaining minutes I have to Carlos.
Is it possible to use one of her minutes? Sorry.
Whenever he gets up to talk, okay? Whenever you get up to talk.
Okay. I am up.
Okay.
I'm actually, I'm taking Michelle's place, because Michelle already took. Is that a fine?
Oh, do you want me to give you?
No, no. Is that a fine?
Whoever.
Yeah, we'll update your name. So is Michelle not here?
Michelle is next, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm able to talk, because I took that gentleman's place. Am I able to talk?
She read the letter from CPAC.
Oh, yes, yes, of course you can. And then I'm going to ask if Clerk Staff could assist to get him into the public comment. You're already on here.
I am there, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Did you want us to move your name up?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm Michelle. I have been sworn. We've lived on the street since 1996. I, too, was part of the first round of Sprint, fighting Sprint. I always write these letters that I just don't want to read them. What I want to say is, my husband and I love our home. We chose it because it's a residential area. It's not an urban area. It's not a commercial area. It is a residential area. We have nine grandchildren. They come all the time. They play. We have a wonderful time. The kids run around on the street. They don't have to worry about big commercial trucks coming on the street. I ask that the supervisors, please, think about just really one thing. What residential means and how, what it means to families who are paying their taxes, trying to make their homes the best place for families, and it's our peaceful place to come home to. AT&amp;T is a conglomerate. It is a massive commercial entity, and there is a place for them. It is not on our residential streets. And I just ask that you set a precedence for all of the neighborhoods in Sacramento County, that we keep them out of there. Thank you for your time.
Sorry about that. We're having some technical difficulty, and I'm going to, let me pull up the list so I can see the names. Okay, Sandra?
I'm Sandra Weideman, and I agree with the opposition that I've heard, and I would like to relinquish my minutes to my husband, Jeffrey.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Jeff Weideman. I am a retired hand surgeon with Hand Surgery Associates here in town. I'm now doing the IT work for them. I'm also a retired Air Force two-star general after 34 years in the Air Force. I functioned as the senior medical officer for the Air Force Reserve. I've lived on Marion since 1988 with my wife, and we raised our two kids there. I'm one of two physicians who live on the street, as far as I know. Dr. Hoon is the other physician. He has written a letter, which I command and recommend that you read if you have not already, because it really outlines the issues that we have. From a historical standpoint, I had AT&amp;T, once it became live after Cellular One went away, and that was before we had, when we had beepers. AT&amp;T worked adequately for me when it was at the lower G-ratings, but as it got higher, it became inadequate. And I was, by calling and speaking to AT&amp;T and telling them of the issue, they said, "Well, let's fine. Pay us $110, and we'll give you a little mini-cell booster," which I did buy, and it worked great. And then, at some point in time, I'm a Mac guy with an iPhone, it started not to work as well, because they, Mac, Apple changed the setup. However, it's my understanding, Audrey, who lives next door to me, has a booster, and she says it just works fine. Unfortunately, she's not here to validate that, but that was encouraging for me to hear. But I ultimately left AT&amp;T for this reason, and I hope I get back into the green. I went and got T-Mobile as a trial, so I had two cell carriers at the same time.
Sir, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
Well, I'm taking my wife's time.
We don't do that, sir. I'm so sorry.
All right. I will echo what has already been said. AT&amp;T is a huge conglomerate. They've got a lot of ammunition. It's a shame on them for not having the negotiating skills to deal with businesses in the area so that they could pay enough money to convince them.
Sir, we're going to need you to wrap it up.
Agent Orange was not a problem till it was. The affluent from 9/11 was not a problem till it was.
Sir, your time is up.
And the brown pits in Iraq were not a problem till it was. I hope the supervisors make the appropriate decision.
And for the record, can you state that you've been sworn?
Yes. Say you have been sworn.
Yes, in many ways.
Okay.
I'm Matt Baskin. I'm the owner of the shopping center on the other side of the fence. But I want to do something, and I want to tell you that you three are going to run on a post. Nobody has to work as many hours and have as much work as you three. My heart goes out to you, because I know you started early this morning, and you're sitting there trying to stay awake, and I wish you my best. If you'll just bear with us just a little longer.
Thank you, Matt.
We're going to make it. There are two immutable facts in this world. You throw a ball up in the air, and it comes down every time. And the second thing is, if you put a 74-foot cell tower in a residential area, the quality of life and possibly the quality of health will come down also, and that we don't want. So I'm asking you, please, at this time, there are many, many opportunities for AT&amp;T to find a regular location. Many of my colleagues don't want it. I've got location that would be perfect, and they can't put it on my property, and I think you should logically deny it in the residential for what it is. The US government is studying right now the effects of these telephone towers, and I think we should put off this answer until they come up with an answer of whether it's safe or not safe. And I'm hoping that you three are half asleep, and I put you more asleep.
Thank you, Matt.
That you'll be sitting there long enough to give us one no each. Thank you very much.
Matt, for the record, can you state that you've been sworn?
I don't hear well either. I only talk well. What did you say?
Can you please state that you've been sworn?
Have you been sworn?
You've been sworn.
Pardon?
Say, "I have been sworn."
Pardon?
Say, "I have been sworn." "I have been sworn."
I've been sworn.
Thank you.
What did I swear at?
Thank you, and have a good evening.
What did I swear at? I swear it.
And for the remainder of the speakers, if you can please start off with that you've been sworn, it helps us on our end. Thank you.
I'm Carlos Kozloski. I have been sworn. I live at 5224 Marion Drive, and I'm going to take an extra few, one minute, okay? I want to address first the property evaluation report that the gentleman mentioned. With 10 properties in Carmichael, I have the actual addresses of each of those properties from the report that they have. None of them are in a residential property. They're all on large pieces of property. Two of them are on county parks, three on commercial properties. One is in a shopping center. One is in a church. Two are on the school properties of San Juan Unified School District, and one is in a huge public storage facility. None of them on a residential property. This particular parcel is Zone RV2. It's a .73-acre lot, and I did a quick review of the Sacramento County zoning laws, and the code, the code for RV2 zoning is intended to protect the rural, small-town character of a neighborhood. A maximum of two detached, single-family homes per acre, a smaller scale uses that will support residential living such as SADU or a limited agricultural facility. Nowhere in the county zoning language, nowhere, is there an indication that a cell tower disguised as a fake tree and surrounded by industrial equipment is compatible to an RV2 or RV2 zoning. Let's be honest, calling a tree is an insult to the beautiful, natural landscape that we have lived alongside for decades. It will tower over, whether it's 55 or 75, it will tower over the one strip store, strip mall next door and above every actual tree in the area, becoming the defining visual landmark of our neighborhood for all of the wrong reasons. Then there is the 25-foot-wide access road proposed to connect the street to the tower side.
Carlos, you need to wrap it up, please.
That's more than twice the size of a standard residential driveway. Once this instructor is in place, the property will meet the zoning.
Thank you.
And I'll wrap it up, I'm sorry. This is not a change of use permit.
Sir, you need to wrap it up.
This is a fact of rezoning of the property without a proper transparency process.
Thank you. John, Randy?
Hello, my name is Randy Bryan. I've been in this industry for a very long time. I helped put backup battery systems. I've been sworn. Backup battery systems and cell towers all over the place. I've watched generators fail. I've watched batteries leak. This is not for a residential area. We're going to be emitting diesel fume for an hour every month. I have not seen anywhere that there's any type of electronic backup systems to any computers anywhere that are saying there's any kind of a leak, there's any kind of a problem. This does belong as all that I've worked on in a commercial area, so that if there is any type of a problem, not 50 feet away from a home, not 50 feet away from a business, but in an area that is safe in case there is an explosion, a battery fails, or anything else happens. I have not heard whether this is a 3G or a 4G tower. Do we know which this is going to be? What we do know is that about seven to 10 months ago, when they started turning on 4G towers, there was a big concern at the airport and every place else. What do we know about the health issues of 4G? In the submissions that I sent to you all, I included websites from 2024 on reports of cancer and all kinds of health issues in the immediate area and within many, many, many feet, not just feet, under the tower. We're talking about where these 4Gs are emitting out into the neighborhoods. Cars that are driving by are the problem that we have. That's the big problem. I had AT&amp;T for a long time. I got rid of it, because when I drove by, it didn't work in certain holes. One hole for 50 yards. Health of the neighborhood is a big problem, and that's my whole complaint, is that I do not believe that the environmental impact study on this was complete. It was just rubber stamped, and we're talking about 4G, not 3G, not what we had in 1995.
Please wrap it up, Randy. Thank you, Randy. Linda?
Hi, I'm Linda Collins, and I've been sworn. I'm not going to repeat what everybody has said.
Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate or actually pick up where Carlos left off about the driveway that's going to lead into the lot there. It's, there's, you know, Marion Drive is a single-horseshoe-shaped street that starts and ends on Fair Oaks. It doesn't lead anywhere else, so there's not traffic coming in and going out of the neighborhoods or going to other retail. The only place you can go is in and out. And so if we have this driveway and new service trucks coming in and out, it's going to add traffic to our neighborhood that is not equipped to handle. And also, you know, we have a lot of children in that area. My husband and I are both cyclists and walkers, and we value not having trucks going by all the time and cruising through that loop. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda.
Let's start with, "I've been sworn." Okay, got that out of the way. My name's Woody Hubbell. I'm the guy that lives 400 feet away from this, okay? The next house over. So I'm going to talk about the financial ramifications of this, because I've asked, I've asked, I have many clients, I'm a landscape contractor for many years in the area. A lot of them are either developers or real estate agents. Every last one said, "You're going to lose $100,000 the second that's approved. You may lose $200,000 if you try and sell anytime after it's built." Okay? That's a hell of a ramification if you look at it from the other end of the deal. Now, Paul here, my neighbor, he's a nice guy, but, you know, he could build this tower, and then what if he leaves? So he goes away, the house gets rented or something else, but he's not living there. We're living there. Now, I built this knowing that I was going to sell one day as part of my retirement package, and that's going to happen probably in the next three, four years, whatever. It's just not right. I'm not messing with anybody. Why is somebody messing with me? You know, if you think about it, nobody in this room wants that tower next to them. You guys don't want it next to your house. I guarantee the AT&amp;T guy doesn't have one next to his house. Why am I getting one next to my house? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next speaker is Ken Payne.
My name is Ken Payne, and yes, I've been sworn in. I've probably been a resident of that area longer than anybody else here. My parents bought our house on Meredith Way in 1965, so I watched that whole intersection develop. The most disturbing thing I heard from the staff presentations was the omission of two large complexes just south and southeast of the proposed site. There's not just one apartment complex, there's two apartment complexes, and there's a complex of condominiums just southeast of the site. My three points were going to be initially the fact that I spent 22 years in the Department of Toxic Substances Control, and in that department, we regulated hazardous waste, and we learned that the three pathways for health effects were dermal absorption, inhalation, and ingestion. And along with that goes two other items, and that's the duration of exposure and the concentration of exposure. So my concern is for the concentration of the residential just south of the proposed site. I heard that the apartment complex was 67 feet away from the tower, but that the permit or the authorized distance was supposed to be 236 feet, and those three large complexes would all be within that 236 feet, I think. So currently, I know that the new Secretary of HHS is reviewing all the 5G stuff, and I would suggest that the board wait to see what the official results of those findings are. I know that Mr. Kennedy was concerned about 5G and has been for a long time, along with a lot of other things. So I would respectfully request that you guys, you know, deny the approval of this project for the reasons that I mentioned earlier, not to mention the reduction in property values and the fact that you've got really an industrial item going into residential neighborhood. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ken. Next, we have Dr. Joseph Kay.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Joseph Colville. I'm a psychologist. My issue is one I would like the board to consider, is to testing, more testing before they erect that tower on the minds, on the physical body of those residents, and anyone that is affected by the noise, the radio waves, and the electromagnetic waves. I think more testing can be required, and I would request this board to vote for that. Also, someone could explain to me why these wonderful gentlemen can have Clark Bonch to tell you everything, but these people who are impacted get two minutes? Now, does that seem fair to you? And does it seem fair that their homes should be impacted? And these folks aren't. They just make money. Come on.
Dr. Joseph, if you could please wrap it up, please.
I pray you could hear this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Good afternoon, or good evening now. I'm sworn. Hello, my name is Dr. Hong Truk Nguyen. I just want to express my opposition to these projects along with different tenants. My health clinic is just barely 40 feet away from these proposed projects. And, you know, as a healthcare provider committed to well-being of all my patients and the community, I believe it is very important to consider both the long-term and short-term implication to these projects on the neighborhood. Because, you know, firstly, the long-term effect, you already know and hear a lot of people saying already, is greatly affects the health of everyone who live and too close to proximity, especially the electromagnetic field effect from this project here. So please, especially for those who want to have the health clinic here, most people is coming with illness, and we want to have the safe environments around the communities, and especially that the population, where children and elderly who live close by to these projects can be also affecting by this health. So please, yeah, I'm just going to reconsider these projects where you prioritize the health and well-being of the community over the interest of the commercial development. Thank you for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mike?
Oh, that was probably Mike Ryanstein, the CPAC chair.
Okay. Mary Jane Bryan?
Good, yes, good evening. I'm Mary Jane Bryan, and yes, I am sworn. Anyway, I am here to present to you the letter that Dr. Hoon Lee had written. However, what he has done is he's, let me just start it, and then I'll just summarize the stuff. "I hope this letter finds you well. I'm writing formally to firmly express my strong concerns regarding the proposed installation. And after careful consideration, I must respectfully oppose the installation of the tower in our neighborhood." And then he lists the reasons that we've kind of talked about already with the health concerns, environmental impact, property values, lack of community consultation. And then he summarizes and says, "For these reasons, I respectfully request that the proposal of the 5G cell tower be reconsidered. I urge you to explore alternative locations, particularly less populated or environmentally sensitive areas that do not compromise the well-being of its residents. As a physician, my foremost concern is the health and safety of my family and my community. I would appreciate your consideration of solutions that meet technological needs without compromising public trust or welfare." And I would also just to thank you for your time and consideration. I know it's been a long day, and please join us in opposing this project to place the cell tower on that lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Eric Gomez?
Hi, I've been sworn. My name is Eric Gomez. I'm a college student and a resident of Carmichael. Now that I'm back home for summer, I've without a doubt noticed the continued poor wireless connectivity around Carmichael. I've only been back for summer break for one week, and it has already affected me quite a bit. Examples of these are difficulty contacting friends and family, working remotely, and basic internet searches that everyone should be able to do. I was a student at Jesuit High School, and I remember the extreme poor connection during school hours while simply trying to get my schoolwork done. I can only imagine how bad it affects people, not just students, but everyone who live here full-time. I can say with the most confidence that the addition of this cell tower will improve the lives of everyone around it. Prior to this hearing, I spent the past week walking around my neighborhood, getting supportive signatures from residents who also wanted better cellular service. I'll tell you that it did not take any convincing at all, since everyone I spoke to is on-board and supportive of the tower. And since everyone is supportive who I spoke to, I can only imagine how many more people would be, because everyone who lives in this area knows how beneficial this addition would be. To answer the question, "Why are we doing this now?", I bring up my main point. Carmichael needs to progress to modern technology to keep up with the 21st century lifestyle. Carmichael as a city is already growing and cannot be left behind the modernization of cellular communication. Strong internet connection is a crucial part of our daily lives, and without it, we simply won't thrive. Thank you all, and I hope you will support the development of the tower.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, that concludes the public speakers.
That does conclude your public speakers.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Oh, Mr. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you for everyone for coming out and taking time to stick around. You know, it's been a very long day for all of us, and appreciate the patience that's involved. And, you know, cell towers are kind of a reoccurring sticky widget, in that we all recognize the need for them as we become more and more connected with the Internet of Things and our fridges and our vacuums and our cars and everything rely on that bandwidth. However, despite whatever is happening with the current HHS secretary, the FCC has very specific parameters or guardrails with respect to how we can approve or deny communications facilities. We cannot factor health risks. That's not within our purview. The federal government has forbade that. We cannot factor property values, perceived or real or otherwise. What we can do is stand steadfast to our standards as we have put forth in our code. And so I've had cell towers being proposed in my district that also look to have deviations for the standards that our code calls for. And because that is all we can hang our hat on, my feeling is, if we make exceptions, and I will say this would probably be a high candidate for a potential exception, given its proximity to commercial, given the fact that it's been tried to be pushed unobtrusively as possible, but the reality remains that it does not fit within existing county code requirements. And I believe if I make an exception in any case, I lose the moral high ground to stand fast to those standards in any future denials. Therefore, I will not be supportive of the, or I guess I should say, I will seek to uphold the appeal of the planning commission decision. And I defer to my colleague whose district represents this.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and thank you Supervisor Hume for that. Appreciate that. I know you have been through this a lot more than many of us here. I also want to thank everybody for coming, all the neighbors here on Marion Drive, very familiar with the community. I am a lifer Carmichael kid, as you know, and appreciate the applicants being here as well, and appreciate, always appreciate, staff, our amazing staff that we have. I am, you know, I agree with Supervisor Hume in terms of, we have set standards. I am not prepared to support this application and this deviation from standards. I think it does not fit in with the aesthetics or the character of the neighborhood, and I don't think the impacts can be appropriately mitigated. I think even at 55 feet or 74 feet, that would not be mitigated, and I think a 55-foot, if you lowered it to 55 foot, that's almost like a false concession, because they can come back and change it, I think, so easily. So I am, I would move to deny the application and approve the Carmichael CPAC's appeal. But before I, before we vote, or if anybody wants to make a second, I will say this. You know, there are other, there are certain circumstances where I would be willing to deviate from standards if it's some kind of compelling need, like housing. You heard another item we heard today. There may be a time I come back to you and the community and say, "Look, we have a desperate need for more housing. You're not going to like it. We may want to put it in some of these locations." So keep that in mind before you thank me for making this motion and voting the way I'm going to vote. But with that, Madam Vice Chair, I would move to approve the CPAC's appeal and deny staff recommendation.
I will second that. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Serna are now absent. So I'll call the roll, call vote. Supervisors Desmond?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Hume?
Aye.
And the motion carries with those members present.
Okay. And will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, our next item is item 59. Item 59, Madam Vice Chair. This is your nominations. You're continuing to July 22, the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnes, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Natomas Community Plan-
I want to come back here for one more time.
Oh.
I want to say this. 25 years ago, I asked for a zoning situation, and they gave it to me over duress, and a lady named Sandy Smoley was the supervisor at the time. At those days, you could walk around, and after they voted it, I walked around and gave her a big smooch, and they gave me a standing ovation. Well, I'm not going to be as you by giving this old guy, giving you a smooch, but thank you very much-
Thank you, sir.
-for your wonderful support.
Thank you, sir.
I can't thank you enough.
All right. You're continuing to July 22, the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnes, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council and the Sacramento Environmental Commission. You're continuing to August 5, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, Casumnes Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, and the South Sacramento Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to August 19, the Assessment Appeals Board, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Public Financing Authority of the County of Sacramento Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first board is the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first board is the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council. Vice Chair.
Yep, please reappoint David Huber and continue the remaining seats to August 5th.
Thank you. Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please nominate Diane Kiefer and continue the remainder to August 5th.
Thank you. Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend nominating Whitona Eitzen-Ton to the Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board and continue the remainder to August 19th.
Thank you. North Highlands Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to July 22nd.
Okay, so that's for...
D4.
D4, okay. And then for Supervisor Desmond?
Continue to August 5th, please.
And then for the first district, I, Chiefs recommend continuing to August 19th. Okay, Public Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend continuing the item until August 19th.
Thank you. Rio Linda Elverda Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to July 22nd.
Okay, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Supervisor Hume?
Please continue to August 5th.
Thank you. Sheriff Community Review Commission. We'll start with Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Please nominate Paul Bonaventure.
And Supervisor Hume?
Please continue to August 19th.
Thank you. Sunrise Recreation and Park District.
Please reappoint Tim Verga.
All right, thank you, and that concludes your nominations and appointments.
Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
That would be County Executive Comments.
Thank you, Flo. No comments today. Thank you.
Board of Supervisor comments?
Any comments? No? Okay, I actually do have a comment, and I'll make it really quick. I just wanted to take a moment to address the issues generated over the weekend with the amount of complaints in our communities with the illegal fireworks around the Fourth of July weekend. Every year, it seems like we hear a lot of frustrations and frightened residents with the scale of illegal fireworks. I know in the past, we've had concerns about using code enforcement to break up large gatherings for safety reasons, which is totally understandable, but what I'd like to propose is something that doesn't involve direct communication at all. I'd like to ask staff to bring back a plan for next year that utilizes our code enforcement team to document illegal fireworks activity in real time, especially at parties where the social host ordinance applies, and then follow up with issues fines through the mail. This would allow us to hold people accountable. If we do this, I think it'll be critical that we have clear advertisement, the enforcement efforts in advance, so that people know that if they use illegal fireworks, they are likely to get a fine in the mail right after. I'd also like to see a plan that contemplates issuing a significant number of citations next year to really send a message that if you are going to shoot off illegal fireworks in Sacramento County, you will pay the consequences. Over the weekend, I saw a segment of Chris Vestal, who is a Sacramento Metro Battalion Chief, and he stated that normally on a call, a normal night, they get somewhere between 15 and 20 calls, and on the evening of July 4th, there were over 300 calls. And so it really shows that there is a problem countywide on this issue, and it would be great to get ahead of it for next year and plan.
Madam Vice Chair?
Oh, yes. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you.
Supervisor, just real quick, are you going to comment on this?
I was going to say something else on that, but, I mean, first thing, thank you Supervisor Rodriguez. I couldn't agree more. I think we all followed the coverage, something we've been working on a lot with passing the social host ordinance that we passed here, and working with code enforcement. It's an incredibly frustrating thing. I would like to hear and to report back some statistics about the fires, number of calls, because I suspect that they are dramatically going up. And if there's a way to quantify the cost of this to the county, particularly unincorporated Sacramento County, we may be seeing some of the cost of the other jurisdictions as well. And I just, you know, I know we have tried to tackle this over the years, and it's a really challenging thing, but it's just such a proliferation. But appreciate you raising it. I had a couple other things, I don't know if...
I would just address that. We can absolutely look at that, Supervisor. I think you're aware that there is a fireworks task force that Deputy County Executive Jones is on, and that group will be bringing forward a report, after-action report, after the Fourth of July. I believe it'll include a lot of the points that you're asking for, but we'll absolutely look at those for next year.
Thank you.
And so one other thing, I do have a German memory, if you don't mind indulging me.
Oh, absolutely.
Before I get to that, I do want to thank staff. On June 12th, right when we started our break, we had a SAICOG meeting, a off-site SAICOG meeting, where we actually had a tour in West Arden Arcade, and Supervisor Hume and Supervisor Kennedy, who serve on the SAICOG board with me, were part of that, and county staff was heavily involved in both planning that and presenting on behalf of the county to the entire SAICOG board. I think there were, I don't know, between 32 and 35 SAICOG board members. We highlighted some of the inherent challenges of unincorporated Sacramento County, specifically West Arden Arcade area, highlighted some of the great partnerships that we have forged with SAICOG in that area, the Complete Streets Project on Arden Way, on Watt Avenue, did a tour of the Safe Stay, and I heard feedback from so many members that this was the best off-site tour that SAICOG had ever done. And we do have a lot of challenges in these unincorporated areas, but we are doing amazing work, and I could not be prouder of the staff who presented. I mean, just consummate professionals and just really, I think, impressed our colleagues on that SAICOG board. So just wanted to pass along that thanks, and please pass it along to the staff that were involved, so. Okay, finally, I'd like to adjourn in memory today, in memory of a lifelong Sacramento resident and dedicated community member, Mr. Rich Lawrence, who passed away on June 17th, 2025. Born and raised in Sacramento, Rich graduated from Sacramento High School in 1956 and went on to serve proudly in the U.S. Army alongside childhood friends. He spoke often and fondly of his time in uniform, especially the memories of jumping out of airplanes. After returning home, Rich married the love of his life, Mary Amy, in 1961. Together, they built a family rooted in love, hard work, and service. Professionally, Rich was a trained electrician who joined the family business, Amy Hardware, in 1969. Under his leadership, the store moved to its current home on El Camino Avenue in the heart of Sacramento County's District 3, where it remains a trusted neighborhood institution, beloved neighborhood institution. Many will remember Rich on the sales floor or over the PA system, always committed to great service. Rich was also a devoted fan of the Kings, the Giants, and above all, the San Francisco 49ers. His home was filled with memorabilia and cherished memories of family trips to the Super Bowl. Rich was preceded in death by his beloved wife, Mary, in 2024. He is survived by his children, Brian and Stacy, his grandchildren, his sisters, and many extended family and friends. His warmth, humor, and dedication to community will be deeply missed. In honor of Rich Lawrence's life and legacy, I ask that we adjourn today, today's meeting in his memory. Thank you.
All right, well, then we will adjourn in memory of Rich Lawrence at 6:58.